Thank you. Is that yours or mine?
Mine.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And we'll start, if you would, Councilman Martin, with the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. If you could bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings in our lives. We ask you to help us see all of the blessings, whether they're great or small. Father, we thank you for first responders. We thank you for their courage, for their quickness, for their decision-making skills. Lord, without them, the world would be a little crazier place. So we're just blessed to have first responders in our lives, and especially here within the town of Oak Island. Lord, we just ask you to watch over us, protect us, be with each and every one of us as we return home this evening. Keep us safe, bring us blessings. Help us to experience joy in our life and see you work as we go through our day. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. With council's concurrence, I'd like to move the presentations on the schedule for tonight to the front. Any objections? Excellent. Two of them, yes.
Can we get it? But...
Madam Mayor, since we've not gotten to the portion of the agenda where we approve the agenda, I'd prefer a motion and a vote on that request.
That's fine. Is there a motion?
It's a move, Madam Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And that is for the presentation, number one, the recognition.
The appreciation for Camden Wood and the appreciation for Fire Department and Beach Services employees. Thank you. Is Carolina here? Carolina? Carolina.
Carolina, yeah.
Carolina, that's what I thought it was. Is Camden Wood here? There we go. Camden, do you want to come up?
No, but I will.
Parents, if you want to get a photo, you're certainly welcome to do that.
We're going to go right there, Camden. So for... Can you hear me? So for Arbor Day, there were some special recognitions that went to volunteers who kept the trees watered at Veterans Park. Camden was one of those individuals, but he was unable to attend that session. So we wanted to give him his certificate. Let's... So we don't stand behind the... There you go. So Camden Wood and family, this is a thank you for fulfilling the 2022 pledge of South Brunswick Middle School National Junior Honor Society to water and care for the Oak Island Education Center named Slay and Ted and the tree at the corner of Southeast 46th Street named Teresa. So thanks to you, they survived their first hot summer and are thriving. So keep them healthy.
Chief Price? It's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council, manager. This is a wonderful moment that we can celebrate. We all know and understand that situations like this do not always turn out good, but we can only hope and pray that we continue to make a difference in the future. I'll first say this is only possible with the support of our manager and council, and especially the support of the working relationships that we have with our partner agencies, Oak Island Water Rescue, Brunswick County EMS, and Oak Island Police Department. On Sunday, May 28, 2023, at 16:49 hours, Oak Island Fire Department was dispatched to four people in the water having distress. Units from Oak Island Fire, Water Rescue, and Oak Island Police responded to the scene very quickly. It was discovered that three people were swimming and became distressed. Two of the people were able to exit the water unassisted while the third was caught in a rip current. The person was struggling to keep his head above water and was tiring very fast. Oak Island QRV 181, which was already on beach patrol that day, was among the ones that responded to the call for help. Firefighter Mike Young, firefighter Chris Dunham, and volunteer firefighter Mike Mulady arrived and was directed by Captain Andy Dick to the location of the distressed swimmer. Firefighter Mike Young made a rapid entry into the water with his rescue gear, followed by firefighter Chris Dunham. Mike Young swam to the person that was in distress, performed the rescue, bringing him back to shore. Additional units on the shore then attended to the person, began EMS care. The person was then transferred to Brunswick EMS and transported to the hospital. It is without a doubt that the quick actions of the rescue crew from Oak Island, QRV 181, saved this person's life. It's with great pleasure that we award a lifesaving pin to Mike Young and Chris Dunham for the quick actions and decisions in saving this person's life from the water.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. And Chief Morris.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So the police department and the town brings more good news, which is well-deserved. At this time, I'd like Mr. Bob Kohunt to come forward and stand with me. Bob is a member of the Beach Services Unit, which is our non-sworn unit that patrols the beach seven days a week from 12 p... From 12 o'clock to... Or 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. Before we get started and talk about some of the details, I want to give you guys just a little history about how Bob got here today and everything, just a few things about what he's been through through his life when it comes to water safety. So Bob grew up in Laguna Beach, California, where he spent much of his time swimming and loving the water. In high school, he was on the water polo team and was a competitive diver. While in high school, Bob had the opportunity to take a survival class in which the students had to partner with the lifeguards and learn how to utilize flotation rescue devices. Since high school, Bob was a competitive gymnast, trained for triathlons, a half iron man, and still works out daily, incorporating traditional weightlifting and gymnastics exercises. So there's a little background on Bob. So moving forward to June 12, it was very interesting about how this all transpired. So our Mike Emery, our communications manager, was meeting a news organization down on 49th Street to do a story on the holes of people digging holes and leaving their tents and stuff on the beach. So in that, the news requested that... Or Mike Emery requested that we have a Beach Services personnel there at the 49th Street access. So Bob was on duty that day, and Bob was contacted, and he responded over to 49th Street to meet Mike Emery. So as... And they did. They came together and they met. And as they're standing there waiting on the news crew to get there, they hear an individual that is about 75 to 100 yards out into the water calling for help. So at that time, Mike Emery calls 911. Bob, going back to his training, he's had his entire life, and as you can see, he's in very good shape. He utilizes one of the rescue tubes that was there at 49th Street, you know, where we partnered with the Jack Helbig Foundation and Water Rescue to provide the tubes along the beach. So Bob grabbed one of the tubes off of the rescue station and immediately went into the water with the individual's brother. So the beach was... It was a yellow day, so it was a moderate current, almost a red day, so the current was fairly rough. So Bob was able to walk out and then swim and rescue this individual and then bring him back to the shore. And those actions were very heroic, and we appreciate that so much. He put his life on the line right there. And I know he had help from the individual's brother because it was a team effort to bring the person back in, who was a 21-year-old guy. So with that, Bob, you know, from the town of Oak Island, you know, our sincere appreciation for what you've done, you know, for... Not only for the victim, but, you know, for the town, you know, as a whole. We just... We so appreciate that and we're grateful, you know, for your service that day. And you were at the right place at the right time. And it's... It's very special for that. So with that, we have an award for you.
Somewhere. Left at home.
So what we've got here is... We'll bring it out here front so everybody can pick it up. And read it. So this is an award from the Oak Island Police Department, lifesaving award to Mr. Bob Kova. In grateful recognition of your courageous and lifesaving actions at the scene of a swimmer in distress on June 12, 2023, in Oak Island, North Carolina. You put yourself in harm's way to save another human life. That was our...
Thank you, Chief. So we move to public hearing one. This is a public hearing to receive citizens' comments of proposed text amendments to Section 6.5 and Appendix A related to amusement facilities. Matt?
Thank you and good evening. I have two public hearings before you tonight. The first is a proposed text amendment, as you mentioned, to Section 6.5, Article 7, and Appendix A of the Unified Development Ordinance. The planning board voted at their May meeting to initiate a text amendment and recommend town council adopt a proposal related to the table of uses dealing with amusement facilities. The planning board's proposal would replace several uses in the table with a broader... Two broader definitions for amusement indoor and amusement outdoor, some of those including game rooms, golf cart tracks, miniature golf courses, privately-owned outdoor recreational facilities, skating rinks, water slides, commercial recreation establishments, bowling alleys, and golf driving ranges, not accessory to golf courses. The proposal would then make these uses special uses with supplemental regulations only permitted in the commercial low-density and industrial zoning districts. These are zoning districts that are only on the mainland portion of the town's jurisdiction. Some existing uses that are allowed in the community business, either by permitted use or special use, would no longer be permitted at all. And for reference, the community business is the business district that's located on the island along East Oak Island Drive. In addition, they recommended supplemental regulations dealing with size, height, and hours of operation for these proposed new uses. Under our current ordinance, this would affect uses in several commercial zoning districts, the CB, Community Business, CR, Commercial Recreation, CLD, Commercial Low Density, and ID, which is the industrial zoning. When thinking about where things should go, it's usually important to think about the purpose statement for those zoning districts. The Community Business District is established as a zone in which the use of the land for commercial and service uses for the surrounding urban market area. And the Commercial Recreation District is intended to provide, for, protect, and encourage a grouping of beachfront enterprises, providing accommodations and recreations to persons wishing to lodge near the strand or participate in the various water sports available to them. Commercial low-density is intended to be located in outlying areas adjacent to major thoroughfares, substantial setbacks to reduce marginal friction between residential uses. It's intended to serve the requirements of residential neighborhoods for commercial facilities and the requirements of highway-oriented tourist businesses. And finally, the Industrial District. Principal use of land is for industries, which can be operated in a relatively clean and quiet manner. It's not be obnoxious to the adjacent residential business districts. Regulations are intended to prohibit the use of land for heavy industry and include properly segregated to prohibit any other use that would substantially interfere with the development of industrial establishments in the district. There's... In addition, there are several uses that would remain in the table that could presumably, depending on how you define them, could fall under these amusement categories: billiard and pool halls, bingo dance halls, enclosed gun ranges, movie theaters, skateboard parks, commercial tennis courts. Under the proposal, those would remain in the table despite this new amusement category being created. Important note, this doesn't affect any existing applications for these uses. In North Carolina, the general statutes provide applicants with what's called permit choice. As long as there's a pending permit, the governing entity can't change the rules in the middle of that permit. What happens if you do change the rules is actually the applicant gets to decide which set of rules to fall under. So for example, if there was a more favorable regulation coming out, somebody had an application already in, they can say, "Well, I want to fall under the new stuff because it's easier for me to do." So in addition, there's some current uses in the CB zoning district that could be affected by becoming legal nonconformities. The two big ones that immediately come to mind are the Beach Life Arcade and then the Oak Island Mini Golf Putt Putt and Arcade right down the road. Under the planning board's recommendations, these would no longer be permitted uses in the CB at all, special use permit or no. What happens in that instance when something becomes illegal nonconformity under our ordinance? It can continue operation until such time that it's damaged up to 75% of the depreciated value of the structure. So it doesn't take into account the land value. It's the structure only. Or if the use ceases for over 365 days. If that's the case, then that use is no longer permitted. It cannot be reestablished in the zoning district at all. Taking a look at our adopted plan consideration, it would affect several future land use designations, thoroughfare, commercial, neighborhood, commercial, commercial mixed use, and residential mixed use. These are all future land uses where these zonings are found. As I mentioned, these existing businesses are in jeopardy of becoming legal nonconformities. This, in some instances, can be detrimental to small-town commercial centers. We... Planning staff spoke with the Economic Development Coordinator to get their opinion on it as well. Small-town commercial centers are sensitive to vacancies in buildings and structures. One of the things that happens in a lot of small towns is if you have empty storefronts, people don't go to those places. And then the other businesses suffer, and then you eventually get into a situation where, you know, your entire commercial area suffers. So that being said, we should consider that we want commercial areas to stay active and used instead of vacant storefronts and facilities. In addition, this would move these uses exclusively to the mainland. What happens in that instance is the people that come to the town of Oak Island to recreate, approximately 40,000 at peak time in the summer, if they want to have or visit one of these outdoor or indoor amusement facilities, if there's no option for them to be on the island and there's no facilities here on the island, they have to drive off the island. The result of that is increased overall system traffic in the town because instead of having a short drive, maybe from your house to a place that's on the island or where you're renting to the island now, you have to drive all the way off the bridge onto... It's not to say that some of these uses can't locate on the mainland, but to remove the potential for them to locate here on the island, you know, increases that chance, so... And finally, town council directed the staff and the planning board to implement a recommendation from the UDO audit to modernize the table of permitted uses to reduce the number of similar uses in favor of generalized uses. In addition, ensure all the uses provided in the table have an applicable definition. We kicked off that effort with the planning board at our last meeting, so that effort has just begun. So staff does not recommend approval of the amendment as currently written. Certainly, there's benefits to taking several similar uses and generalizing them, as was the recommendation of the COG, the Council of Governments, through the UDO audit, and certainly developing supplemental regulations where necessary to ensure that we maintain the character of development that we want on the island is maintained. But also, for the reasons I just went through, the staff does not recommend removing the uses from the CB zoning district. Really, what we would recommend is that you provide staff with some guidance as far as, you know, do you want to see these things consolidated? Do you want to see supplemental regulations developed? And then we can fold this effort into the existing effort to modernize the table of uses as a comprehensive approach as opposed to taking things one piece at a time. With that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
I'll start. On page 18, Matt? One and two. Under amusement indoor and amusement outdoor. The outdoor delineates private ownership. Is it... Why is only outdoor considered as private?
That's a great question. Once again, this is the recommendation of the planning board staff. Pages 18 and 19 are a report that was drafted by one of the planning board members for them to consider with this text amendment. As a question as to why the ownership is important and one versus the other, I couldn't say typically... And what I've got on your screen there as far as where you want to start with recreational type use is to develop something that's based on commercial versus perhaps public uses instead of an ownership.
Those are private and...
That's right. So should you have... Should that be the council's direction? We would move towards something like that, you know, commercial recreation versus public recreation facilities.
My second question is, as we've been talking about a new recreation facility, which of course would be public, is it... I'm wondering what the public perception would be that we push all of the other recreation off-island when we in fact are expanding our recreation capacity on-island? I don't think you have the answer for that.
I do not.
I don't either. But it does seem to be inconsistent.
I will say that... Once again, I can't really speak to that particular question. I will say that under the schedule of work that I presented to you to modernize the table of uses, staff intentionally baked in the opportunity for stakeholder input for that exact reason. Because whenever you consolidate uses and amend the table of uses, you don't want to unintentionally create a situation that could have been avoided with extra eyes on it, with extra public input on it. So that was our intention.
Yeah. Those are the two things that stand out for me.
Mayor. Kirkland. I have some serious concerns with it. I think we need more detail. I think it's a step too far. You said if something is damaged 75%, that landowner cannot rebuild that amusement. Is that correct?
If it's illegal nonconformity, yes, sir.
Okay. Bottom line is, instead of putting people in their place, I want us to put ourself in their place. Some landowner owns that piece of property, and it gets damaged 75%. They're paying a mortgage and everything else. They're stuck with a piece of property that has been used as a whatever for the last 15, 20 years. Now, all of a sudden, they have a blacktopped piece of ground that they can't use. Is there something I'm missing on that?
No, it's a pretty fair characterization of it. Under the current regulations, just for an example, because it's one most people are familiar with. We'll talk about the Oak Island mini golf that exists here in town. Now, currently, in the community business zoning on the island, that's permitted as a special use. So let's just say, for example, because I don't know, I haven't done the research on this particular issue, let's say they don't have a special use permit because they preexist our current special use regulations. A hurricane comes in and blows the whole thing down. As, you know, as you mentioned, it's damaged 75%. Under our current regulations, they could at least come back and ask for a special use permit to reestablish that use. Should it be removed from the table entirely? They couldn't do that unless they came back and asked for the table of use to be re-admitted to reallow them to build it back. So currently, there's that special use permit place... Process in place for those uses.
So again, if someone were to own an amusement and it gets damaged 75%, they have to come up here with their hat in their hand and ask for a break. Frustrating.
They'd be asking for a new ordinance amendment to reallow the use in the zoning district. That's right.
But...
And that would be town-wide applicable. They would be requesting a full-blown text amendment.
That's right.
Correct. Did they consider supplemental regulations for on-island?
Yeah.
Cart Blom, just zero all the way across, is stringent.
Yeah. The recommendation of the planning board and the draft proposal was to remove these as permitted uses on the island.
With no supplemental regulations.
The only place they would be permitted is in those CLD and ID zoning districts, which are on the mainland. There would be special uses with supplemental regulation in those instances, but not permitted on the island.
Okay. Back when we were talking with the hotel folks, it was said that we had three CB zoning districts in Oak Island. Is that correct?
We have three, I mean, essentially groupings, yes. I mean, several parcels. You know, you think about the commercial district here on East Oak Island. It's fairly long, but it's one contiguous district, yes. So we have three contiguous CB zoning districts on the island.
Was there thought given... We just hired a new economic development director. Was there thought given to how this could hinder her ability to progress going forward?
Yeah. That was part of my report was we touched base after the planning board made their recommendation to get her feedback on it. And the feedback that I just presented as a part of this was echoed by her as well, that small-town commercial centers are especially sensitive to vacant storefronts. You know, in the instance where we have a... You know, not even going back to the destroyed, you know, somebody's trying to sell their business and they're not in operation for a year while the business is on the market. Presumably, if that's over 365 days where there's been no operation, you might not be able to reestablish it, and the building is still there. So that's an even trickier situation to be in because you don't even have a raw end.
Situation presents itself, thank you for your annual taxes, but you can't use that piece of property.
Not for the use that it was before, that's right.
And I've lived here 10 years, and I don't even know what the building was that was down there by Chasers. I always thought it was a Mexican restaurant. I have no idea.
It was a Hardee's to begin with.
It was a Hardee's.
It was built to be a Hardee's.
It was, yeah, yeah.
It didn't last very long, but it was built to be a Hardee's. Then it became a Mexican restaurant.
Yeah. And for 10 years, it sat idle. Somebody's paying us taxes every year. With this proposal, what could they do with that property?
Well, if it was illegally nonconforming use...
Which this would make it.
Well, that wouldn't... Well, that wouldn't, this wouldn't make the restaurant use. This doesn't have to do with restaurants, this is amusement facilities only. But if that had been an amusement previously, and they wanted to reestablish it, yeah, they would not be able to reestablish it.
Not an arcade, not an axe-throwing thing.
That's right.
I have no, one last thing. We were talking about cleaning up S, 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 P, S. This is just a minimal step toward that.
Yeah, our recommendation to the planning board was to fold all of this and discuss it as a part of, as you mentioned, modernizing the table of uses.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the, there's a backdrop here that I think is important, notwithstanding the administration's objections to this proposal. And the backdrop is that the current UDO is almost six years old, actually is six years old, and in some ways may be outdated, given the development that we've seen. And this council has asked for and paid for an audit, and said basically, the UDO that we see is too permissive. We're being forced to make decisions that we don't completely control because of the impressive law or SUP. Close those gaps, identify those issues. And from a public point of view, preserving the small-town aesthetic, which is in the consistency statement, is something we hear all the time. We don't want to be Myrtle Beach. So there's a backdrop to this. We've had a lot of cleanup, you know, moving pieces of the UDO, consolidating some, and council has approved those, they're housekeeping. This is, you know, the first really substantive proposal. It is bold, and what I hear the administration saying is, there are too many unintended consequences, this would be a significant radical, maybe radical too strong, a significant departure from the norm. So having said all that, my question is, it seems to me, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, that the administration's position is that if this went back to the planning board and there were further discussions and revisions, that supplemental regulations could be developed to achieve part of what the goal seems to be here.
Absolutely.
Is that, am I interpreting your position correctly?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion then, when my other colleagues have a chance to comment.
And that was my understanding of what we requested of the planning board. We did not want to be held, our feet held to the fire for a special use permit without supplemental regulations that were already built into the ordinance. And that was my understanding of what we asked the planning board, wasn't it? Okay.
I would point out, Mr. Bach, I did want to say that I think on one part, you're right, that it creates unintended consequences, but, you know, as I mentioned, the island sees something like 40,000 people come here to recreate. I would submit that, in my opinion, it's poor planning to move something that those people who come here to recreate might want to use as a part of their recreation to the mainland and force them to take a vehicular trip. So that's why, in addition to the unintended consequences, Staff does recommend removing it from the CB zoning district.
Yeah, I noted that in your argument, and certainly that there's a plausible nature to that. On the other hand, having a dedicated zone that manages recreation is not a bad idea either. What I think we need to do, on this and several other things that are coming to this council, is find collaborative solutions, bring everybody to the table and find common ground. If we keep swinging at the fences, we're not going to get anywhere. On the other hand, death through incremental growth, you know, months to develop things is also painstaking. So I think if the administration's taking the position, we can develop supplemental regulations, let's talk further about this, then that's what we should do.
Hundred percent.
Makes sense to me.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Matt, do you have anything?
Just a couple of things, quickly. Just in addition to what Councilmember Kraft, I think, was trying to illustrate, and Matt, I don't want you to confuse the issue, we understand that this doesn't implicate restaurants, but I think Councilman Kraft's point of view was, the old Hardee's slash Mexican restaurant, if that individual was approached by a developer who wanted to create an amusement on that property, then that's a no-go. So now we're limiting that person who owns that land, ability to either develop the land or sell, or, you know, to profit from the land that they've owned and worked hard for, and as Councilman Kraft pointed out, are still paying taxes for. So that's certainly a concern, that we would limit a current property owner's ability to market their property. And if we completely eliminate amusement off of the table, then that certainly makes it more difficult for them, as our community continues to expand and grow and see additional services come into light, you know, like we added the splash pad, you know? And I think initially, people were like, oh, why are we adding a splash pad? Nobody's going to go to that. That thing is packed now, I mean, drive by the splash pad in the summer. It is an attraction down there. I mean, so, you know, let's not cut off, you know, our nose in spite of our face, or however that saying goes. So that's one point I want to make. The other point I want to make is, the concern that I have is, we only recently, last month, said, okay, planning board, work on the permitted table of uses. And you had indicated, wow, that's a big, it's a big effort, right? And we should really do a good thorough job on it. It's probably going to take five months, I think you may even have said six months. But yet, here we are in less than 30 days, and we've already got a text amendment in front of us, trying to manipulate the table of uses specifically for amusement. So I would kind of question the urgency, why all of a sudden, in less than 30 days, has the planning board turned this around, when we want to see a more thorough, comprehensive effort, looking at the table of permitted uses, in my opinion? I was shocked to see this turn around so quickly, and I question the motive behind it, knowing that a second mini-golf has already presented and is getting a permit. And my understanding is this, they would not fall victim to this, they're free to move forward with their plans to bring a second mini-golf to the town. So that's correct, right?
That's correct, they have a pending application.
That's right, it's a pending application, so they're moving forward.
On their application, it hasn't been granted yet, but yes.
That's correct, yes, understand.
Yes, sir.
And then, the last thing I want to point out is, this is the second time in less than a year, that planning board has sent us a text amendment that intentionally creates nonconforming properties. And we defeated the nonconforming property last year, and here we are again, looking at, to what I believe, to Councilmember Kraft's point, something that's very concerning about intentionally moving parcels into this nonconforming status. Because it's not about a hurricane creating 75% structured damage to a property. I get phone calls from people saying, well, Councilman Martin, if it's a fire, there's an exemption clause for fire in the ordinance. There is no exemption clause for structure damage due to fire. 75% structure damage on a nonconforming parcel is damage. It doesn't care how the damage occurs, whether it's a storm, or a fire, or any other event that's a catastrophic event for the property, it's nonconforming, it cannot be reestablished under a nonconforming status. This is very dangerous, and all property owners should be very concerned about any intentional text amendments that's coming out of advisory boards that wants to intentionally increase our nonconforming parcel inventory. I just think it's absurd, and I think it's malicious, and it's unfair to property owners to put them in financial hardship just to accommodate something that's going on in the background that I think will come to light soon. But we really need to take our time, slow down, we've asked for extended time and an extensive review of our permitted table uses, and this is just being rushed to the table way too quickly. There's too much contradiction between staff's point of view and planning board's point of view, we need to reconcile, we need to have stakeholder input, we do not need to rush this in less than 30 days. I'm going to suggest that we table this or send it back for more work and future consideration. I just cannot move forward with this tonight.
I'll make that motion. I think, though, it's important.
Mayor Protim.
We do have speakers signed up.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
But I do think it's important that we have the public discussion.
Yes.
Because I think that there are differing points of view. And, yes, I think nonconformity, especially with the stroke of a pen, that's problematic. I think the solution is in the supplemental regulations. But again, I'm going to advocate for finding a common ground here in sensible things. To use your example, Councilman Martin, if somebody put Circus Circus in there where that old Hardee's is, our aesthetic, small-town, walkable downtown is gone. So, you know, we need to strike a balance here, that's, and I think the administration is signaling they can do that, they want more dialogue. I think we should allow them to have it. Sorry, I didn't realize.
I would agree with Mr. Bach and Mr. Martin. I want to know what the rush is. Why are we trying to get this done in the snap of a finger? These things are critical, they need to be looked at. We need to have the input to, from the public and from the staff, to make the right decision. There's no rush to this, this is not, you know, there's not a deadline to meet that I know of. Is there a deadline, or is there something that has to be done right away? No? Okay, that's my opinion. This needs to be looked at in depth before you make a decision.
What, Matt, what went into the examples for indoor and outdoor amusement? I was surprised to see some of these, actually. Especially the carnival, the slingshot rides, Games A Chance. Amusement parks, somehow, have they been in our table of uses up to this point?
Not to my knowledge. You know, once again, these definitions were drafted and passed by the planning board with, I think, staff input as far as how we would amend and recommend different definitions.
I would imagine, of anything that's been recommended, this brings us closer to North Myrtle Beach, this list of items, than any that I've seen proposed. And I just want to say, if there's concern about special use permits with supplemental regulations, then perhaps, I think it was you, Matt, that said Leyland doesn't use special use permitting?
Yeah, there's several different ways that you can set up your use table. There's no requirement that a jurisdiction have special use permits. Some jurisdictions do it based purely on whether it's a permitted use or not, some base it on having to be established in a conditional zoning district or not, some do special use permits like the town here does. It really depends on the policy as far as the preference towards the approval process. Now, if something's a permitted use, there's no public hearing to that, it's just like building a house, you come get your permits, you meet all the standards, criteria, you build your development. A special use permit, as you are all well aware, is a quasi-judicial hearing, it's meant to be an evidentiary hearing. Conditional zoning is a legislative decision, you would treat it just like you would a zoning map amendment, any other zoning map amendment. So there's quite a few different ways to set that up. It's an important policy decision, because each one has a different level of public involvement and engagement, and what type of testimony and input that the deciding person or board can use, you know, in a quasi-judicial hearing, only supposed to weigh evidentiary testimony. In a, just a purely administrative decision, there's no real testimony, you just meet the criteria, or you don't, and it's all objective, there's no subjectivity to it. And then in a legislative decision, it's very broad, you can take an opinion-based, you know, testimony and things like that. So it's really kind of how the governing body wants to balance that decision-making.
My thought here, and Mr. Eads, you may want to weigh in, my thought here is if there are a motivational concern relative to special use permits with supplemental regulations that would require quasi-judicial hearing, then perhaps, there is a way, I don't know if the right word is moratorium or something, and perhaps we set that aside, which doesn't leave us exposed, while the six months it will take to go through the table of uses. Another consideration is, as we're going through the table of uses, we should decide, you know, which of these we're going to use, not after the fact, but I would think it would be, so are we going to use P, P, S, 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 S as current, or are we going to somehow combine or remove, or, I mean, that's kind of an organizational piece that seems we should make that determination, because I'm sure there's not a single person up here that enjoys the quasi-judicial hearings, when we seemingly have very little input to what's already been decided.
Madam Mayor, number one, let me second that notion that quasi-judicial hearings aren't the most fun use of our time, but it does give the council, gives the public the right to see everything, the evidence has to be produced, and gives council the ability to add conditions to approvals. But to your question about a moratorium, that is not something that can happen overnight.
Right.
It is pretty involved procedurally. There are certain findings that you have to have, there's a certain length of time you have to advertise to have a public hearing. I think the safest thing to do is, between now and then, if you're not inclined to pass this tonight, is to continue as we are doing now with the special use process, because it's a double-edged sword, the more you get away from those, the less ability council has to weigh in on a project-by-project basis.
Right, I get that.
And I don't think it would take six months if we do meet the criteria to establish a moratorium, but it's certainly not going to be within 45 days.
Right, right. So I'm just throwing out there as fodder for consideration.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Eads, if I may ask, chasing a rabbit down the road, quasi-judicial hearings are frustrating for our townspeople, because they come here to express their concerns, and an intelligent attorney tells them they don't have standing. And I know that comes, I know that comes from, I know that comes from the legislature, there's any way we can change the language for our quasi-judicial hearings to allow our townspeople to not have to go out and hire an expert to speak for them?
It's been my, and I understand that, and I, you know, and we work for the people. There's only been one person since I've been with this town that I have suggested did not have standing, and that's because that gentleman said he did not even allege he was going to suffer special damages. And that's not my role, that's not the Town of Oak Island's role, that's the General Assembly's rule. You can hear, you can allow people without standing to hear it, but the risk you run is if you base your decision on someone who doesn't have standing, that's subject to an attack on appeal at the Superior Court. So it's a balancing act. Like I said, I've been the Town of Oak Island, with the town for over a decade, that is the one and only time I can recall ever stating that someone didn't have standing, and that was simply because the gentleman said he wasn't even alleging he was going to incur special damages.
We go to public input, Lisa. Gail Baker. Thank you, Matt. My name is Gail Baker, I live at 110 Northeast 16th Street. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Town Council, for holding this special public hearing tonight. I want to ask for your support on the vegetation or tree amendments, but I know several speakers are here tonight, and so I will speak to encourage your support and approval.
Excuse me.
This is the wrong public hearing.
Specifically on the amusement facilities.
Yes, ma'am, yes, I was getting to that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Can I get my time back? Okay, stop. Now, let me get back to where I am. So since there's several people here that are going to speak about the trees, I'd like to encourage your support for the approval of the amusement amendment. Oak Island Drive is the gateway to our town, and its appearance impacts all of our quality of lives and property values. I have a few points I'd like to make concerning amusement facilities on the island side on Oak Island Drive. Height restrictions are a concern. The existing mini-golf on Oak Island Drive is a low-key, family-oriented, small-town style mini-golf. small-town-style mini golf. We could welcome another similar-style business. We don't want any large-scale, over-the-top, fake-plastic volcanoes, pirate ships, or waterfalls. We don't want a Myrtle Beach feel on the island side. Another concern is lighting. We don't want any bright lights or any colored lighting highlighting a carnival-type attraction. Residents abut commercial lots on the back and right across the street. Another concern is noise. We don't want cannon blast or other theme-type noises or loud music. Residents also abut our commercial lots on the back and right across the street concerning the noise. Another concern is tourism. We want to welcome visitors and vacationers who come to our small town. Family-friendly and relaxing feel. That's why they come here. As you know, the UDO should communicate what council and our people want for the future developments. Our UDO currently allows for many unwanted land uses and activities that these uses are allowed without supplemental regulations, to control or limit them for our size, scale, levels, hours, et cetera. Our UDO currently allows for Myrtle Beach-type amusement on Oak Island Drive. Our UDO currently has gaps in unwanted activities like aerial parks, zip lines, and carnival rides, which are arguably allowed on Oak Island Drive. Please vote for the amusement amendment, so amusement activities are built on the mainland side, not on the island side. In closing, I'd like to add that I watch most of the public, uh, the planning board meetings. The UDO identified many risk areas. While watching the last two meetings, it became clear that the planning board members are trying to work the risk items, but they are actually being stalled. The planning staff want to continue working on housekeeping items and put our quality of life and property values in jeopardy. Council must promote a sense of urgency because the town is at risk of unwanted development. By council taking the lead, you will protect Oak Island property, values, and our citizens' best interest. Thank you again for making a better future for Oak Island. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Glenn Baker.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Baker and I live on 110 Northeast 16th Street. Thank you for allowing me to express my opinion on the amusement facilities' UDO change. I have handed you each of the pictures of amusement facilities from Myrtle Beach. Picture one is a miniature golf volcano, thus the height restrictions on those facilities. You can see how large that is. The second picture is the go-kart racing. What comes along with go-kart racing is extremely, uh, amount of noise to that. Third is a water park, which is two or three stories high. And fourth is the zip lines, which was actually addressed on, by the, uh, planning department. Okay? This is what, these pictures I have handed you represent what I think is the worst-case scenario if the planning board recommendations to limit the use of amusement facilities on the island is, is not passed. The issue is, I would hope that existing businesses would be grandfathered in once the amusement facility is passed. You guys write the amendments. The planning board writes the amendments. You guys get it. I would hope that you guys would put something in there to do that. Okay? The law of unintended consequences was put forth, I believe, by Mr. Bach or maybe it was Mr. Martin. Okay? How fast was paid parking put out? Did they think about the law of intended consequences when paid parking was there? They rushed that thing through pretty fast, didn't they? Okay? I'm trying to figure out why the planning boards recommended UDO changes have not been passed previously. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan recommended changes that were originally put forth in 2017. That is six years of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan inactivity. Mr. Bach brought it up and said that our development has rapidly outpaced our UDO. Anybody here at the hotel and felt like the UDO hamstrung us as citizens, as a town, because it was inadequately written? It hasn't been updated. That's one of our biggest problems that we have. The UDO housekeeping has been done by the planning board. Let's get on to the important items that not have been in action today. Our current UDO is not protecting our citizens. Okay? I worry about those who support weak UDO status quo and oppose homeowners, voters, and businesses' quality of life concerns. Environmental concerns and property valuations are trying to overload and slow-roll efforts to change and protect. Six years, people, six years. Okay? I ask the town council to pass the recommended planning board changes to the UDO. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam Council, Ma- Madam Mayor and Town Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I speak here in favor of both the tree and the amendment, tree and the amusement amendments tonight. I know there's a lot of speakers here talking about the tree amendments, so I'm going to focus on the amusement amendment. Um, as we all recognize, our UDO is dangerously weak. It does not reflect the current vision of a vast majority of Oak Island residents and business owners. Our UDO does not accurately reflect our Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Our UDO does not adequately protect our town. Our quality of life and property values are at risk. For example, just ask any of the abutting homeowners of the incoming Boardwalk Hotel about the future quality of life and their property values. The Boardwalk Hotel's lawyer used our UDO against our town and our town council, and he told us we should be happy that it wasn't a Publix. The Boardwalk Hotel, the beach life, Myrtle Beach-style mini golf, and all the other risky UDO land uses that are allowed by special use permits demonstrate just how and where Oak Island is exposed and at risk. And you know what? There is a risk. The next resort-type hotel could be around the corner, and we don't even know about it. So the time to act is now. You have two hearings before you. The Environmental Advisory Board, the Planning Board, and many other groups in town worked very hard to recommend changes and improvements to Chapter 32, the tree ordinance. The Planning Board, by a 6-1 majority vote, is recommending restricting amusements. Both of these recommended UDO amendments deserve your approval tonight. We need to begin fixing our UDO to stem the risk to our quality of life and our property values. Delay will not protect the town. Delay only continues the exposure and risk to the town. If you have an issue with the current amendments, make the adjustments tonight and approve them, and if need be, please add supplemental regulations ASAP. Thank you for your time and for the service to town.
Thank you. Phil Dudley.
I actually want to speak at the vegetation and tree park.
Okay. Zachary Fisher.
Hi there. My name is Zach Fisher. Thank y'all for taking a minute. Uh, I wanted to address the amusement, uh, facilities amendment. Uh, there's a lot of, let's start on the other side here. A little nervous on this. New for me, folks.
Mr. Fisher, your address, please.
Address, 211 Southwest 15th Street.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, here on the island. Uh, I just want to take a minute to talk about this and how it would economically have a big effect off the island in particular. I know there's a lot of emphasis here on, on the island, and everybody's addressing that. This amendment, though, does not address on the island, off the island. This amendment particularly just kills any entertainment facilities, any ability to do anything with our commercial land off of the island. Uh, there's a significant section of commercial land off the island that this amendment would kill virtually any and all type of uses for and would destroy the value of that property. Uh, when it comes to entertainment facilities, we need something like this. There's people currently moving off of this island of all ages, from young age to old ages. Uh, as council members, I'm sure y'all have talked to them that we need something to do. We need something to do. And here, the town council comes, or the planning board comes back and says, well, we're not going to do anything. We're going to eliminate any type of entertainment. There's people here moving here every day of the week with their kids, and they're looking for that entertainment and that value. Along with that, we can get more tax dollars into the community and keep our tax dollars here. Right now, everybody from Oak Island leaves here and goes to Southport, right? We go to Southport and we spend our tax dollars in Southport. Southport gets our tax money. Right now, an entertainment facility could keep them tax dollars here in this community. And not only that, though, we could reach out, grab Leland. We could grab Southport. We could grab Bolivia, bring them tax dollars into our community, maybe get some of them holes in the road fixed, if we could dedicate some of that to the funds and get some of them potholes fixed. So I just, I don't think that this policy was meant the way it's written. It's just a blanket policy intended to prevent economic growth and prevent progress and moving forward versus giving us the ability to bring in tax dollars and help our economic developer with that. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Andrea Crasno?
My peers have spoken very eloquently about the proposal to accept the hearing, so I need to, you know, repeat and stuff like that.
Thank you. That's all I had on that set. Any other discussion by council? They're here. Motion?
Make a motion, Madam Mayor, to remand this particular amendment.
Let's close the public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I need a motion to close the public hearing first.
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Mr. Bach.
Um, I make a motion to remand this text amendment back to the planning board and to direct the planning director to work with the planning board to develop supplemental regulations that address the issue identified.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. I just, uh, I just want to add, I know comments were made about slow-walking, um, work on our policies, and, um, a couple of months ago, I had asked the planning board and the staff to double up on meetings if necessary, as they did with the UDO, uh, which lessens our exposure over time. Um, if you're able to meet for two meetings a month, instead of just one meeting, we could dispense with this much more quickly and then be able to get on to the, uh, the land use plan. I know that's a lot to ask of you, but, um, I think both the people of Oak Island and your council would appreciate the extra elbow grease to, to get this done, so we can limit our exposure.
That's also a lot to ask of staff, too.
It is. I recognize that. Let's move on to the second public hearing. Citizens' comments on proposed text amendments to Chapter 32 of the Code of Ordinances, which is vegetation, starting on page 21. Mr. Baker.
Bear with me just a minute. Hey, second public hearing for tonight is a proposed text amendment to Chapter 32 of our Code of Ordinances. As you mentioned, it deals with trees and vegetations here on, in the town's jurisdiction. Uh, so our town forester, Rick Patterson, uh, is a certified professional horticulturist. Uh, he had been working with the town's environmental advisory committee to draft revised ordinances for Chapter 32, which deals with tree and vegetation. This effort began in the second half of 2022, so this is a, uh, long effort that's been produced here. Uh, as this chapter also deals with development, it was forwarded to the planning board, uh, for their review as well. Um, planning board discussed the recommendations in their April meeting, uh, provided some feedback for clarity and organization, uh, and then continued their review, uh, at the May meeting, uh, and then forwarded their recommendation, uh, to you tonight for review. Uh, so we'll start off with a summary of what, uh, the town staff in conjunction with the EAC recommended, uh, before we got to the planning board. Uh, just a brief summary. You have the, the language in front of you, but it would standardize the definitions and terms to industry standards. So, uh, things like caliper and diameter and breast height and, and all these other standards, uh, those were consolidated, uh, to be more consistent with industry standards. Uh, we organized and added a couple of new tables for existing implanted tree credits. The table that was in the ordinance was, uh, a little confusing because it seemingly only applied to planted trees and wasn't really clear about how you deal with existing trees and how you credit those trees. Um, so that was reorganized. Uh, the tree credit was, uh, adjusted as well. Uh, it's, previously, we didn't have in the ordinance a list of trees which counted as credit for when you, uh, need to replant or, uh, preserve a tree along with development. Uh, so it created a simplified tree list of Oak Island-approved native plant material. Uh, this tree list included North Carolina-native shade-producing trees and plants resistant to wind damage and drought with salt tolerances. Additionally, uh, it was staff's opinion that having a smaller number of approved plant species allowed local nurseries to better plan future demands. Uh, we often get feedback, uh, from nurseries that they just don't have stock, uh, which is difficult to deal with. Uh, it increased, as I mentioned earlier, the new tree planting credits for larger diameter trees and live oaks. Um, in addition, uh, recommended some additional spacing requirements for mature shade trees. Shade trees, spacing has an effect on the canopy as it grows out. Um, even the, the Arbor Day Foundation has recommended spacings for new plantings. Um, so staff recommended a blanket 20-feet spacing, um, which kind of falls in the middle of, uh, the recommendations that we can find. Uh, allows additional credits for saving larger trees. Once again, uh, trying to encourage people to preserve those larger trees. Um, the staff and the EAC worked on a fee, uh, tree preservation fee. We'll talk about that briefly. Um, the idea here is that, uh, if you're, if a property is being developed and there are no trees to be saved, um, those trees still have to be replanted under the ordinance, um, but recognizing the value of a preserved tree versus a newly planted tree, uh, that fee that you would pay would then, uh, go into In-Lu Services, so that the town could then use that to plant trees on public property, rights-of-ways, parks, et cetera, uh, to attempt to restock some of that canopy that was lost when the, uh, existing trees were removed. Uh, the planning board had a, a couple of different recommendations there. Uh, they did not recommend the tree preservation fee policy. Uh, in addition, they, uh, recommended an adjustment to the table, uh, the tree credit table to allow a credit for two-to-four-inch trees, uh, and amend the amount of trees required to be preserved or restocked. Uh, we'll briefly go through their recommendations for the, uh, preservation or restocking. Uh, the ordinance breaks it down into several types of development. First, with lots with available sewer. Our current regulation is two per 1,450 square feet of lot size. Uh, the planning board's recommendation would be to make it one per 500 square feet of lot size. Um, for oceanfront properties, oceanfront properties don't have a tree planting requirement. Instead, they have an amount of vegetation that's supposed to be preserved or replanted, also based on the lot size. Uh, that would go from 50 square feet per seven, 50 square feet of vegetation per 700 square feet of lot size to one square foot of vegetation per 10 square feet of lot size. Lots with no available sewer, I don't really have many of these anymore, if at all. I'd have to look at Mr. Kelly, uh, since sewer, do we have any? Uh, but anyway, that would change from two per 1,625 square feet to one per 550. And then finally, uh, we do have a requirement for lots that don't have any trees to plant back a certain amount, uh, or shouldn't say plant back, but to plant a certain amount. back a certain amount, or shouldn't say plant back, but to plant a certain amount. And that would go from two per 1,450 square feet to one per 500, mostly a 50% increase in the amount of trees per lot to be preserved or replanted. So as we've discussed several times, the current regulations in Chapter 32 allows lots to be cleared for required site improvements, as long as the minimum level of restocking is accomplished prior to getting your certificate of occupancy. So if you come in and you're building a house on a piece of property and you have all the elements required to build a house and you need to remove those trees, you can under our current ordinance, as long as you replant them to the levels that we just discussed. There's not currently any regulation that requires trees to be preserved after the CO is issued. So our current ordinance really deals with the development process and what's left over at the very end of the development process. So just to give you an idea of what that, what impact that has on the town, the island portion of the town's jurisdiction identified 1,1,773 parcels. 1,585 had no addresses, so you don't get an address assigned to a piece of property until you are pulling a building permit for it. Otherwise, it's just, just a piece of property with a tax number on it. As an amount of parcels, that's about 13 and 1/2%. No, there's probably some parks in there. We didn't field verify all 11,000 parcels in the town, but there's probably some, you know, some park space in there, some other parcels that may not be developable necessarily. That's included in that 1,500 there. When you look at that in terms of raw acreage on the land on the island, we have 12,344 acres. Those 1,500 parcels that don't have addresses comprise 420 acres out of that 12,000, so approximately 3% of the island, 3 and 1/2, is what we will be talking about would be affected by any of these changes particularly. There are a couple of current planning efforts related to Chapter 32. As you well know, the town was awarded a grant from the North Carolina Forestry Service to have a tree canopy assessment conducted by an urban forestry firm called Planet Geo. They do very comprehensive canopy assessments and urban forestry products. This assessment is scheduled to begin by the end of June. It should actually be getting started pretty soon, actually, in the next few days. And at our kickoff meeting, they intended for it to be completed hopefully by the end of August, but certainly no later. I should, that's a typo on your screen, it should say the middle of September is when that should be completed. In addition, the planning board discussed several additional recommendations for tree preservation and protection at their June meeting. So just last week, at that meeting, they requested town staff seek some additional stakeholder input related to those issues. So as I mentioned, this was forwarded to you from the May meeting. At the June meeting, there were additional items in Chapter 32 discussed outside of this recommendation, and it was requested that there be some stakeholder input surrounding those issues. So that being said, since we do have some current planning processes in place, town council may want to consider receiving and taking into consideration information from the tree canopy assessment or stakeholder input. As far as staff's recommendation on should you be inclined to recommend or approve a proposal, staff would recommend the proposal that was drafted by staff and the environmental advisory committee and adopt the associated consistency statement. That's all I have for you. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions. I think Rick is here, I didn't see him, but I assume maybe he's out there somewhere in the crowd.
Wouldn't it make more sense to get the information from, from the study and from the stakeholders that are going to meet with the planning board?
It certainly could be informative for the planning board and this board and the environmental advisory committee. This, I will say, the draft that the EAC worked on, they worked on it with Rick Patterson, that's his professional recommendation. As I mentioned, he's a certified horticulturist, so it's not like you're just getting guidance in that instance out of nowhere. He's, he's giving you a professional recommendation. But that being said, as I mentioned, there's some, some other efforts out there to, to give us some more information.
I'm neither a horticulturist, a forester, or any of those things.
Me neither. That's why, that's why I was curious if he's here.
There's a couple of things that I find that are seemingly inconsistent. One, we're not doing anything about clearcutting. You can still clearcut. With no preliminary review of that piece of property and encouragement and/or advice how to shift a home, you know, one way or another that might preserve a large tree, which currently gives us benefit, it seemingly, to a layman like myself, that the benefits that a large tree gives you far outweighs a smaller tree, especially one that's only two inches at the DBH, right? So, and then I, I looked at one tree, so I have a third of an acre, 1/10th less than 1/3 of an acre. So I took that just to do the math, to see what the implication would be for me to abide by, not that I'm required to, but would abide by what was being proposed, to see whether or not it made sense. I would have to plant 27 trees. Where would they go? And at, and at two inches, I can't imagine that their survivability rate, I mean, what would I lose? A third? Half? So it seems to me, a tree that's already thriving, anything and everything we could do to save a tree that is thriving would, should outscore, if we're going to use tree credits, should far outscore 10 two-inch trees, which maybe shouldn't be two-inch trees, but should be four-inch trees or six-inch trees. I don't know what the cost difference is. I'd rather one, I'm sure, but I'd rather one four-inch tree even, which would have a much greater chance of survival than six two-inch trees. And it, and that would provide me benefits much sooner.
And I will point out that our, our current ordinance, there was a draft effort in 2016, I believe, that was done in conjunction with the North Carolina Forest Service to have an ordinance that was more oriented towards tree canopy versus, our ordinance right now is geared towards the number of trees versus the canopy protection. That ordinance would, geared specifically towards the canopy, would have resulted in fewer numerical trees on a lot than our current ordinance does because it was more concerned with the, the development of that canopy over time. And it gave credit to large species for the, for the canopy at maturity, you know? So it wasn't concerned with whether you planted a sapling or not, it was more concerned with the survivability and the mature canopy of that tree and the spacing requirement therein. So I'd certainly take your points, you know, absolutely.
So just to, for a point further, if, if the study is around canopy, right? And we're focused on numbers, how do we reconcile that data?
Yeah, so I mean, certainly planting more trees can, can increase your canopy over time. I mean, that's, that's certainly true, but once again, from a staff standpoint and our recommendation, we also included spacing requirements to make sure that, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, I might have to call my horticulturist to hear it. But if you notice that trees that have a very large canopy that's developed over time, they typically don't have much competition around them, you know? So they don't have, while certain trees, and trees certainly do grow close together, I mean, it's true, I have two on my street that are two different species that the trunks touch, and they're very large trees. But on those lots where you see a big broad canopy, usually there's less competition around, meaning less other trees that are taking up water, taking up soil nutrients, et cetera. So that's kind of the importance of, to your point, spacing and making sure that we have adequate room to actually put all these things in.
20 feet, I'm sorry. 20 feet apart, I don't think I could put 27 trees on my lot. So the feasibility of it concerns me some, and no one is a greater proponent of green that, well, I won't say greater because y'all are obviously much more knowledgeable than I am, but I love the trees. But it would end up being a forest in my yard, and I'd violate the 20-foot spread. I read an interesting, just to keep the emphasis, however, on our trees and vegetation, read an interesting article recently where it talked about green as infrastructure. And it, it amplified the notion to me that the vegetation, particularly the trees, is every bit an infrastructure for an island such as ours and works in a complementary way with whatever efforts, artificial efforts we're putting in to manage stormwater. So to think of trees as infrastructure is an interesting consideration. Personally, I'd rather see what, if we pass this now and the work group that's currently working, and then the, the tree canopy piece comes back with data, and we just passed, would we not be amending these potentially?
I mean, we'd certainly present that information to you, and if council chose to amend it again, then yeah, you'd be right back at it.
But I'm wondering, and what, so we know, there's nothing that prevents clearcutting, and there's nothing that deters clearcutting if there's no meeting in advance where there are large trees that we might work with the builder to hold on to. What's done after the CO to preserve the trees, further preserve the trees, either the large ones or the small ones? Is there, does it not make sense to have something for after the fact as well?
Certainly could, should this board, I mean, if that's your intention as the board in the policy, yeah. I mean, but as I mentioned in my presentation, there's nothing after this. Our current ordinances are not set up for the after-the-fact issue, they're set up for the development issue. So you're right, once the CO is, is done and a property owner moves in, under our current ordinances, they are free to do with their property as they wish.
Yeah. Well, and the number of trees, too, prevents them from doing patios and pools, so you're just asking to get them cut down.
There's no enforcement. I mean, how do you enforce that, though?
That's right.
I agree. No, but to put that many trees in, they would almost have to cut them down to have a backyard.
The elephant, elephant in the room to me, and Councilman Martin alluded to it during the amusement discussion, it seems like you're bringing something to us and asking us to vote on it, like the mayor said, and then probably a month or two from now, going to bring back a more polished situation, which is asinine thinking. Were you finished? I'm sorry, man.
I am. Thank you.
I just jumped in there, didn't I? I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
Three or four things. I think there's some real risk here. I don't think anybody's in favor of clearcutting lots. I'll yell at the top of my lungs, golly, why do you have to do that? And I think most people are against clearcutting lots. But, and I'll call it the, the DARA committee because the planning board decided last week to have this, have this stakeholder discussion, and that has a lot of merit to it. Bring the builders together. Bring people who are, are strong tree advocates together, sit them down in a room, and where can we go? What can we do? There may not be a legitimate one answer, but we haven't done that due diligence yet where people who have an interest on both sides, well, golly, you haven't thought about this. No, I haven't. Golly, I have to do this, that hurts me bad. I hadn't thought about that. Have, have a meeting of the minds. I wrote down, and boy, I believe this, some decisions are hard, and we try very hard to do what's best for the people of Oak Island. Reaching a happy medium, we may not be able to do. I doubt if that can be done, but first, we've got to do the research, got to do the due diligence, have to have the meeting of the minds, understand all the ramifications. Five-by-10 square lot having to have a tree, that's, that's 500 square feet. If cutting down a heritage tree when there's other options, shame on people that would cut down a heritage tree when there's other options. But we've got to get our heads together to see what the other options are, and there's always other options, but we just haven't done our homework yet. So before we start voting on this here, I think the stakeholder group needs to put their heads together. Real, real solutions need to be brought to us, and then hopefully we'll go down the right path, but I don't think we have a path yet to go down.
I'd like to walk it back a little bit. So the layout of this proposal is, in the agenda, is difficult to wrap your head around because of the repetition of Chapter 32. Let me just say that. So those of you trying to read this, one is the administrative proposal, the other is the planning board proposal. I'm going to say, in my six years here on council, we've passed two tree ordinances with the utmost optimism and hope. Both have disappointed. It's, as Councilman Craft suggests, a very difficult issue. I do not, however, think it is intractable. But what is going to be required here is people are going to have to come together and surrender some of these absolutes on both sides, or we're not going to get anything done. So I'm wondering, Matt, you're recommending an administrative proposal and therefore recommending against the planning board proposal. What are the key differences, and what is it about the planning board proposal that the administration does not like?
Yeah, so as the, the mayor alluded to, the, the increase in the number of trees per square footage, a 50% increase in some lots, it would be difficult, if not impossible, to plant 20-some trees, space them appropriately, and develop that into an urban canopy. Further, to the point of preservation, the current ordinance, as it was drafted by the staff in the environmental advisory committee, was intended to encourage more preservation of trees. So grand credits to larger trees that are being preserved more than what we do now. The creation of a tree preservation fee, which is an economic incentive to try to preserve those trees versus, you know, versus not having it at all. You know, people, we always say people typically vote with their wallets in a lot of instances, so if it's, hey, I can save some money in my building by preserving these trees versus the cost of clearcutting them, et cetera, asking them to make that economic decision. And then if they make the economic decision to remove them, then the town has got some funds to go plant additional trees to make up for that loss of those existing trees. So those two policies, we would recommend, one, keeping the, the credit, credits the same, and two, enacting the tree preservation fee in order to encourage more tree preservation under our current framework, to the extent that we can.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's, that's all I have.
It seems like one proposal goes too far from your point of view, and the other doesn't go far enough, and here we are again, stuck in the middle. Let me ask this question, because Councilman Craft alluded to it. So we have additional planning board work that's going to occur on vegetation, irrespective of what happens here. We also have this stakeholders meeting and a canopy survey, so there, there are a lot of data points that are still out there that we don't have, just for the record, that they're over there. I would pick up on one of Councilman Craft's other statements. I think if we're, we're truly serious about this, regardless of which proposal prevails or perhaps some hybrid of the proposals prevails, we are going to need more resources in enforcement. I mean, that's clearly the case, and our horticulturist cannot possibly do all of this along with his other jobs. So, you know, to say we want to save trees and we have these rules, but if they're not enforced, it doesn't matter. It's just a nice document. So I don't know if that's part of the administrative thinking, that we're going to have more enforcement pre, during, and after the construction and following up, because without that, I don't think we're going to succeed, sadly. I, I think we're going to have to commit not just to a policy, but to the resources to enforce the policy. So I remain optimistic that we, we can find some middle ground here, and that may be naive, I don't know, but I think we can.
Certainly try.
When is, when is the stakeholder, the DARA committee, for want of a better word, when is it convening?
So we haven't scheduled that yet. That was just decided. That was just decided last Thursday, and as you know, in addition to staffing that meeting, I obviously staffed this meeting, so I'm going to work on getting that scheduled up tomorrow. So I'll be reaching out to some folks.
Yeah, I think we ought to put that on the so-called rocket docket if we can, so.
Certainly.
Thank you for explicating that.
I just have a couple of things to say. I'll keep it brief. I see the two dynamics here. Your survey that you're doing for the tree canopy, is that what it's called? And the coming together of the two groups to discuss this. That's critical, because like Mr. Bach and Mr. Kraft said, you've got to meet middle ground, you've got to find someplace, or this will go on and on and on and they'll...
Like it has.
And just as a point of reference, I was born here. You people don't know how many trees we've lost, okay? I love the trees, but I have to be amenable to different opinions. And again, I think those two factors coming together would be the greatest thing, and to have the information. I don't think we can make a decision until we have the facts done.
I'll try to be brief. The first comment I want to make is we need to be careful of just loosely throwing the term "clear cutting" around. Clear cutting is a term traditionally used in the forestry industry when there is no recovery plan after the cutting and therefore promotes soil erosion. We have a vegetation ordinance in place today. It may not be perfect, but it does require replanting of trees before a certificate of occupancy can be issued. Now, this may sound simple, but it actually can be difficult for the homeowner to execute. Just as the mayor pointed out, if she were to be required today to plant trees under the proposed changes, she would have to plant 27 trees. How many of you out there in the audience and listening online are willing to go back and calculate your property's square footage and plant the required number of trees that you're proposing new homes be required to plant? I have a feeling many of you, like the mayor, is going to be baffled at where do I put 27 trees on my property and how are they going to compete with one another to survive? I also want to point out that several times since I've taken office, I have encouraged people to go to the website and look at the Smart Yard program that we promote online. I've asked staff, I've asked the planning board, how can we incorporate the Smart Yard program into receiving credits toward vegetation replanting? Because guess what the Smart Yard program does? It encourages or discourages soil erosion, and that's the end goal here. The end goal isn't, let's count trees and put them on a property. The end goal is, how do we protect parcels from soil erosion? And planting vegetation is what accomplishes that. Vegetation, whether it's a tree, or a shrub, or even a rock formation on an elevation of the property, these are all smart tactics to help with soil erosion. Furthermore, we keep forgetting the fact that we're forcing these new homeowners to plant trees, and then as soon as they take occupancy of the home, as Matt pointed out, they can cut them all down or dig them all up. There is nothing that holds these trees or these property owners accountable for the plantings. Someone told me jokingly, they're like, so I can go order trees from a nursery, have them planted, and as soon as I occupy my house, I'll turn around and sell the trees to the next homeowner next to me who needs trees? Because guess what? My neighbor just went through this process, and there were two shocking revelations I learned from working with my neighbor. Number one, the nurseries don't have the trees, people. He tried desperately to find a local nursery to provide the 20 trees that he needed to replant on his property. They didn't have them. He had to go to a nursery far away, increase his delivery fees. The trees are probably not going to survive because they had to travel a long journey to get there, and the people are not coming back to do maintenance on it. So he's struggling to keep the 20 trees alive that he was required to plant. Furthermore, when they were cutting trees down, I asked the guy cutting the trees, I'm like, who selected the trees to be cut down? He goes, well, we're cutting down for the building pad. And I'm like, well, I understand that. And he says, but if it were, in my opinion, there were several small hardwood trees that were only two inches in diameter, that the builder said, cut those down. He said, those could have stayed. They could have built this house and kept some of those smaller hardwoods, and they would have survived the construction process. So I've also advocated in the past, and maybe it's falling on deaf ears, but I've said, we need a process on the front end for tree selection.
Yes.
If you don't cut the tree down to begin with, you don't have a problem. There is no issue with replanting the tree or finding a nursery to provide a tree if the tree didn't get cut down to begin with. So we need to do a better job on the front end of tree selection, and that requires education, right? If the builders just understood that they could save a small hardwood versus cutting those down, and in the end, we're all better off for it. The canopy will improve over time, the house can still go on the property, no one's being required to invest large sums of money to plant trees. Tree selection, in my opinion, is critical on the front end. Now, people have a theory about pine trees, and I was told when I moved here, don't cut down my pine trees, they're okay. Well, I didn't have to cut them down. Hurricane Florence took care of the pine trees on my property. So we lost seven trees because of Florence, and no, I haven't replaced them because I'm not required to, but the hurricane took care of that. So I think we need to be really smart. I appreciate the effort by everybody and their comments around, well, there's going to be stakeholder meetings, and there's going to be a canopy survey that we don't even have the results for yet. Why are we going to make a decision tonight? And then to Councilman Kraft's point, and then turn around in three months and you're going to have a text amendment coming to us because the canopy says this, or the stakeholders agreed to save small hardwood trees on the building site. I mean, there's a lot of moving targets here, and I think we just need to have time again. And I know people get tired of us so-called delaying things, but these are important decisions that we're making, and it takes time and it takes data to get the input to make these decisions. So I, too, would be in favor of let's get the data coming in from the canopy assessment and the stakeholder meetings. And the other thing that concerns me is we're trying to hurry up and rally around this when, according to Matt, there's only 3% of the entire acreage remaining. So we've made it this far, we've made it 96.5 or 96.6% of the way today, and we have a healthy tree canopy, I think. I think the assessment's going to say, we look pretty good. I think we're always classified as a tree city, right? Don't we get that classification as well annually or when we get renewed for that? So think about that. We have consumed 96.6% of the total acreage of Oak Island, and we're okay. So let's not panic with the last 3%, right? And do something totally drastic that's going to require additional text amendments or additional burdens on property owners when they're already struggling to try to meet the requirements under our current vegetation. But I'm a big fan of pre-selection. I really think if we can get the resources and put together a plan and do a better job on this last 3% of selecting trees to be cut down, I think we'll be better off. That's my opinion.
Just a couple of comments. One, a couple of people have mentioned pre-application meetings and surveys, et cetera. That was one of the things that the planning board had on their docket for last month that was asked to be considered in the stakeholder input. So that is something that's being considered as well. Back to Mr. Bach's point, that's additional staff and enforcement necessities to actually conduct those meetings and in addition, meet people on site and actually make that determination. So I just wanted to throw those two things out there for you.
So I think my observation, and I've spoken with many of my colleagues and with many of y'all about trees, is this is important to us as it is you, but we want to do this in a way that's smart, with an emphasis on existing trees for a whole bunch of reasons. I just looked at if I were required, it would be over $20,000 to put trees on my property, and those aren't four inches, those are something less than four inches. That's maybe the only way I could put 27 trees on my lot, but I also think we need a complete solution. So there may be only 420 acres left, but those are an important 420 acres. So I don't want to just discount that. But what that also says to me, Mr. Martin, is that we need a complete solution, we need something on the back end as well. So we're trying to slow runoff, and we're trying to get the benefits, all the benefits that a tree would provide us. Then we need a complete solution and something that we can support. And I have no problem supporting additional staff if this is what the island wants. I have no issue to be able to have someone to focus on that, because we're not going to achieve a solution without it. So I don't apologize for sending it back. I just think we need a complete solution and we need the data that's coming to us to make that best solution. And I also agree with Mr. Martin in terms of smart gardens, because they can help erosion and to stem runoff and can be beautiful all at the same time where trees cannot. So having said that...
One thing I'd like to throw in, dawned on me. We've gotten away from having that reputation of kicking the can down the road, and tonight we're kicking the can down the road twice. And I hate that to be part of what people think we've done, because we have not been doing that. We've been addressing everything. So Matt, if I can ask you, sir, these are real issues that need real fixes. Next month, can we have a completed proposal brought to us?
It seems unlikely, when the canopy assessment won't be done until August or mid-September. In addition, it would have to have stakeholder input, present that stakeholder input back to the planning board because they haven't ruled on several of their issues, and then bring it back to town council as well, so.
One thought, and I'll hush, sir.
You're okay.
A whole room full of people came here tonight to hear where we stood on trees. We're kicking the can down the road, now we're telling them we're kicking it really far down the road. Sooner rather than later would be good for people who need some answers where we stand.
I think we all want answers.
Madam Mayor and Council, we do have people signed up to speak at this public hearing.
Yes.
Well, just as an aside, when a decision is made and hasted, you end up with the pear trees down Oak Island Rock, just as a thought.
Phil Dudley?
So I can count noses. And so I feel a little like I'm tilting at windmills. I'll introduce myself as Don Quixote, 218 Sellers Street, and I thank you all for your service, Madam Mayor, councilpeople. I honor your public service. I'm going to go ahead with my remarks. I speak tonight on behalf of over 500 members of Tree Peace OKI. Without engaging too much hyperbole, it must be said that the sandbar that we call Oak Island will not exist but for the trees that hold the sand, create a windbreak, and wick away stormwater. The seven citizens appointed to the planning board committee have recommended that we strengthen our UDO to save trees on lots under construction and require planting back trees. The planning board staff of two people has taken a different tack. In my three minutes, I want to ask you to look at three specific areas. You can actually take the planning board's first piece of your attachments, chapter 32, and make two or three changes and pass it. And I heard tonight, and I forgot this, that it started with EAC and Rick Patterson. It's a very professional document that could be passed tonight. The combined, number one, the combined effect of item 3276-1G1 on page 34 and on table 3, page 37 in your package, is that a clear cut lot only needs to plant back three trees, three-inch DBH, to be in compliance. Three trees, not 27. Surely, we do not intend to double the double credits. Please just strike paragraph G1, as double credits are already given in the table. My second part, on page 35, paragraph 3276, letter H, states, the existing trees must be 20 feet apart. I've heard this addressed tonight. And I just shake my head. I drive down our main thoroughfare and see huge trees that would fall into the category of heritage trees, five feet apart. So I don't understand. I heard it from Matt where this came from, but I tell you, we must have an aquifer that's magic here or something, because these trees tap into it and they thrive. So we do not need to have trees 20 feet apart. Make it five feet, or just strike it, and that's a win for planting back trees from the builder's perspective. And the last bit, number three, on page, on chapter 3276-1A and E, pages 33 and 34, this is where they get into how many square foot of lot and how many trees, okay? The planning board staff's recommendation is one per 1450. You can make that anything you want. You can make it one for 1,200, but you could do it tonight and vote on it. So I just want to recommend that you take the recommendations of the seven citizens of the planning board and the EAC and vote on this tonight, because it's good. Yet, it can be changed. It can be changed again, it can be improved. But I just want to say, protecting and planting back trees should not be a controversial topic. Trees improve property values. Ask anybody. It's universal. Thank you again.
Mayor, that's all I had signed up for that public hearing. All right.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Thank you. All in favor? Unanimous? Council, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to delay the vegetation ordinance until we get the study back from Matt and the stakeholders' meet that the planning board recommended. And I did listen to that three and a half hour meeting as it was going on. Bless you.
All in favor?
I'd like to discuss it for just a moment.
Discussion, yes, please.
I agree with that, but I would prefer that we set a deliverable timeline. So the canopy study is September, this could be acted upon in October, and it seems to me at that point, we'd have lots of discussion, lots of data, and we'd be prepared to move forward. I don't want to let this slide, that's all.
And he also said that it could possibly be earlier than that, so, right?
No later than.
Okay.
How's that?
I'm okay with adding that to my motion.
I have a question. Matt, so what impact would the tree canopy assessment have on a future decision we would make?
So the tree canopy assessment that's being conducted by Planet Geo provides parcel level data of not just the existing tree canopy, but it also goes back about 10 years to look at changes in the areas. So not only can it let us know where there's not a good tree canopy and areas where there are good tree canopy, it can also let us know areas that maybe are worth targeting for additional plantings, you know, if there was, for example, a tree preservation... You know, if there was, for example, a tree preservation fee, fund, in an area where there wasn't many plantings based on our canopy assessment, that might tell us that, you know, not only is that fee and fund a good idea, but also some areas that we could target for public plantings in the right way, et cetera. So it is basically just raw information, I'll put it that way. There's usually a one-page sheet of very broad recommendations about how to use the canopy assessment, but it is a data-driven tool. So as far as what it could help you learn, it's really up to council to say, this is what we want to know. Do we have the data as a result of this assessment to take a look at that and make a determination one way or another? I hope that's helpful.
Would that help us shape ordinance?
It certainly could help you shape policy. I mean, so, for example, we have parcel-level data. You know, you could look at, this is just right off the top of my head, so I apologize, I wasn't prepared for this at all, but you could look at, say, oh, well, we knew a house was built in the last 10 years on this piece of property. What was the canopy like 10 years ago? What is it like now? When was that house built? So say, for example, the canopy, the house was built nine years ago, and we know that the canopy was X 10 years ago, but it's improved back to a certain amount based on what we planted. You know, that could be relevant data to let us know, is what we're doing right now having some type of impact one way or another? So, sorry, that's just right off top.
That's okay, no, thank you.
Might not be a fully formed thought, but...
Definitely, the work group is going to provide some input and hopefully some things to think about, some possible solutions. But I didn't know whether the canopy assessment was going to provide input that would in fact shape policy. If the cancer was known, then maybe it would be worthwhile not to wait for it. That's the only reason I asked.
Okay, the motion is on the floor, seconded, amended.
All in favor?
Charlie, did you agree to try to set that established?
No later than October?
Yes, I do.
All in favor? This is almost two hours into the meeting before we get into the presentation in front of this. If you'd give us a five-minute break, a bio-break, we'd appreciate it.
We've already done the presentation.
Thank you, Sheila. We are back in session. Thank you very much. Thank you for staying. Next is presentation on mosquito control spraying. Abram Young from Brunswick County Mosquito Control Project Coordinator. He still here? We didn't scare you off?
You didn't want Scott?
Take a quick minute, introduce Mr. Young. His name's Abram Young. He's the Special Projects Coordinator with the Brunswick County Mosquito Control. He's got a little presentation that he's going to give us on processes and what we use. He's been with them over nine years and worked with City of Wilmington with stormwater before that. And so he's been coming down here his whole life and joined Oak Island, just like the rest of us. I'll let Mr. Young take it over and listen to the experts.
Thank you, Scott.
I don't know if I'm an expert, but I've been doing mosquito control for the county, like I said, about nine-plus years now, and I come from a background in horticulture, along with working with the City of Wilmington. So my name's Abram Young. I'm the Special Projects Coordinator for Brunswick County Mosquito Control. I work in the Operation Services Division right here in Bolivia. This is my contact information, I like to share this. If anybody's got any further questions, concerns, something that pops up later on tomorrow that you'd like an answer to or just a conversation, feel free to shoot me an email or give me a call. So we're going to talk a little bit about the county's program. So we have several municipal programs throughout the county, but this is primarily the county's program. Our municipal programs, we consider them our municipal partners. I mean, they're kind of an extension of us. Our supervisor that is getting ready to retire has been there 30-plus years and has helped provide, you know, education throughout southeastern North Carolina. He's been a member of the American Mosquito Control Association, the North Carolina Mosquito and Vector Control Association, Mid-Atlantic Association for years. And he actually worked with the state developing mosquito control programs back when the state had something called Public Health Pest Management. His name is Jeff Brown. He, like I said, he's about to retire in a couple weeks, so I'm going to try to walk y'all through this. Okay, so we're going to talk a little bit about the county's program. Just briefly, mosquitoes, mosquito habitats, and so you can kind of get a picture of why, you know, what we do. Then we're going to talk about some of the permits and some of the regulations and oversight that we have to work through in making an application. We're talking about integrated pest management and then working with areas concerned. So a little bit about Brunswick County Mosquito Control. We were established in the late 1970s. We have a vector control supervisor, myself, the project coordinator. We have three full-time vector control techs. We have one part-time sprayer. We have somewhere around 33 spray zones, all within the unincorporated areas of the county. So we do a lot. There's a lot that has to be done for only five people. Typically, a spray run is set up, if we're going out and doing a spray run, they're set up on a four-hour basis. But that doesn't typically happen until later on in the year. So who we're regulated by, because this is a question that we always get. Obviously, Brunswick County policy dictates what we do and when we do things. The NCDACS, that's our pesticide license. The laws that we have to follow, the use of our product, storage, and also, they provide annual inspections to our facility. They come out and check our license, they do a license check, they can come out and dip our tanks and see what we're spraying. Another partner who regulates is the NCDQ. So we, and along with Oak Island, I do believe, and several of the other municipalities have an MPDES permit, and within that is a PDMP plan, which is a pesticide discharge management plan. And this kind of dictates, hey, we've got to do other things besides just, so many people are used to seeing us use the spray truck. There's other steps that we have to take to try to control mosquitoes besides running that spray truck. The EPA regulates our pesticide labels, the label is the law, so we have to adhere to whatever that label says, we have to do it. And some of the other partners that we work with, the US Army Corps of Engineers, we work with NCDQ, KAMA, we work with Demler. And then some additional guidance that we get is North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. We work closely with Michael Dole, who's our state medical entomologist for mosquito control. We work with the North Carolina Department of Public Safety. They do have a contingency contract. So say, a natural disaster like a hurricane comes through and a county or municipal program needed assistance, they do have a vendor and a contingency contract already available that counties and municipal programs can take advantage of. That also works for locally transmitted arborovirus. So like when Zika took effect in 2015, 2016, this is something that they explored and developed this program. We work with FEMA, and then we get, of course, we get guidance from US Fish and Wildlife and North Carolina Heritage Group on any of our maps. Some of the professional guidance that we get, our vendors are probably our biggest allies, of course, we're buying stuff from them, but they provide us with the most up-to-date information in the mosquito control industry. And it really allows us to stay on top of the game as far as what we're doing and how we're doing it, and provide us with the newest technology. So we are minimizing impact to those areas that don't need addressed, or we are, you know, taking in consideration, we can use this software and be way more efficient in our spray applications. We are members of the American Mosquito Control Association, the Mid-Atlantic Association. We do provide representation to the North Carolina Association, and then we work with our university partners, NC State, ECU, and Western Carolina. So a lot of the things that we do with those folks is, we do a lot of surveillance activity. That's probably, the backbone of our program is surveillance, in which we'll look at some traps and kind of see what we do, but we will send samples off, adult mosquitoes off to these institutions and look for disease resistance. We'll have the mosquitoes tested for West Nile virus, or we'll have them tested for Triple E. But they provide a lot of information for us and, again, are providing us with the most up-to-date, science-based information possible, which we trickle down to our municipal programs. And this is kind of, if you were to take a screenshot of all the guidance, all the people that has a hand in what we do, that's a lot of organizations that has oversight of what we do during a hurricane response or just in our daily operations. It is a lot of folks that can say, hey, why are we doing things this way? It's not, you know, have we checked this, you know, before we're out there making an application? See if we can go back one. So a little bit about mosquitoes, so you can get kind of the concept we're doing. There's about 3,000 species worldwide, 176 in the United States, 64 in North Carolina, and 47 in Brunswick County alone. So again, you have your male mosquito, you have your female mosquito. They have the egg stage, they have four larval instar stages, they pupate, and then they go to this adult. And why we should kind of show this slide is because, you know, only the females bite. Why? Because they need the protein, so they'll actually bite you with their little stylet, take that hemoglobin and break down that hemoglobin to get the protein to make your egg castings. So if they don't get a blood meal, they can produce a handful of eggs. But if they do get a blood meal, they can produce, you know, up to 500 eggs, some species. And then you can see their reproduction potential. So Oak Island area, the two or three most common mosquitoes that I see in this area working in this industry are your saltmarsh species, 80s tiniorincus and 80s solicitan, and then a container species, 80s alvepictus. And as you can see, just doing the math, saltmarsh mosquitoes can have up to 12 breeds a year. So you're talking about millions of mosquitoes if left uncontrolled. So what is Brunswick County Mosquito Control? We are not a commercial-based operation. We are Public Health and Mosquito Control. We are, you know, doing science-based applications. We are here to support the function of the local health department. We are here because viruses like Triple E, which is Eastern equine encephalitis, West Nile virus, are endemic to this area. They're found within the wild bird population, and we do currently have the amplifying host, which is the vector. So we have Culexida melanera and Culex pippians. They are, Culexida marineras for Triple E and pippians is for West Nile virus. And again, that's endemic to this area. So every now and then in the fall, we will set traps, we'll go out and try to catch these mosquitoes, and we'll actually send those samples off to the state, they'll test for them, and then you'll see the local press release come out through the local health department. Aclaritatus triceratius, that's more of a mosquito that you're going to find in the western part of the state. We do have some of them here, but the reservoir for that, which is primarily chipmunks, is found in the western part of the state. And then we have to deal with issues like, in 2015, 2016, we had chicken gunia virus, and then Zika virus that flared up around that area, around that time, excuse me. And then constantly, you see things like dengue fever. Dangue fever is a continuous virus that circulates in the Florida area. But again, we're, like I said, we're Public Health Mosquito Control. We do have these vectors, and that's kind of what separates us from the commercial guys that just go out and do the backpack. There's a lot of other things involved that we have to do first before, and a lot of other people involved before we're actually out making an application. So mosquito habitats. The typical ones that we deal with are obviously saltmarsh. Look at how many miles of saltmarsh are from Belleville to the state line. Woodland pools, permanent water settings, floodplain mosquitoes, if you're out dealing in the green swamp, pastures, settings, which could, as an example here, that'd be Saraphra Columbia, and then containers. We either have natural containers or we have man-made containers, which would be your flower pots, your boats, your tires, your tarps, stuff around your house. So again, going back to how we're regulated. So the NCDQ, once a year, comes out and does an inspection of our MPDS permit. And within that permit, you find what's called the PDMP plan. And this basically dictates that, hey, we have to have a mosquito threshold. So when we send our guys out to do side investigations, we're going to send our techs out, and they're actually going to go to the resident's home and try to, you know, field ID any mosquitoes that they can. Or they're going to get an ID, they're going to say, hey, yes, we're getting seven mosquitoes a minute in this particular area, and we're going to look to see what that particular habitat is. This doesn't exclude 80s alvepictus because it's a container species. There's a whole nother host of control methods, which is tip and toss, that's associated with that mosquito. So, but our guys will physically have to go out there and say, hey, yes, there's seven mosquitoes a minute, for us to consider routing a spray truck. Nine times out of 10, we've already been on ortho photography. We have some sort of historical data about this location that we say, hey, it's this, it's this woodland pool in this area, and we can use a different method of treatment besides routing that truck out there. Within this plan, it dictates that we must do IPM, Integrated Pest Management. And there's components, and I'm going to go through that in just a second, that says, hey, these are all the steps that we have to do before we route that spray truck, before we're out, you know, making an application. And one of the reasons we do have that MPDS permit is because we do applicate over 15,000 acres a year. On the county, it's like 900 square miles, and again, there's 33 spray zones and five of mosquito control personnel for the entire county. So again, there's no, you know, there's no safe insecticide. But what separates us in the municipal staff, what separates us from just the common guy going out there and putting out, you know, an insecticide, we are licensed professionals. We have this much oversight that goes into making an application. If we mess up, we have a whole host of people coming to us saying, hey, why didn't you check this box here? Did you do this? Did you look into this? The label is the law. The EPA and the NCDU put that out there. The label's the law, and we have to follow the label to the law. So all of our techs, including myself, are public operators. We have a public health category pesticide license, and it's with the NCDACS. So what is IPM? I know probably a lot of you are familiar with IPM, but for some that aren't. It's Integrated Pest Management, is an effective, environmentally sensitive approach to manage pests. It simply relies on common sense practices that's most economical, that has the most economical means with the least amount of hazard to people, property, or an environment. And that's it in its most simplistic point. But what goes into our IPM program? What do we do at the county? So we have a surveillance program. Again, that is the backbone of our program. We're sending guys out to do land counts. We trap 365 days a year. So even on Christmas morning, there will be someone picking up one of the mosquito traps, taking it back to the lab in Bolivia for it to be ID'd the following week. We do biological control, we do source reduction projects, we do larva control, and what should have been last is adult control, and we do public education. So a little bit about our surveillance program. Again, there's 47 different species in the county. Not all of them affect us. Most of them are nuisance mosquitoes, and then some of them don't even prefer to bite humans. I mean, and then we have some that are predaceous on other mosquitoes. We do a year-round surveillance program. We run traps from Calabash, Bolivia, and Belleville that are collected daily. So we take all that information into our lab where it's broken down to species so we can kind of get the peaks and lows of what each species is doing throughout the year. So we know at the beginning of the year, when the canidensis populations come off, we can see that, and how the vexan populations dies out when it turns into, you know, real hot weather, we can see that. And right now, everybody talks about the gallinipper, the big, huge mosquito that's out right now. If you're inland in Brunswick County near the green swamp, you know about it. It's Saraphra ciliata. So right now, they're showing up in our traps, we know they're there. Also with that, we collect all the rainfall data and the weather data through the National Weather Service, the temperature data, and that's stored as well, and that's part of our FEMA documentation to show that, hey, we can marry up the rainfall event and the species data to show those peaks and valleys. So this is example of a couple traps that we use. The big silver one there is our New Jersey traps. They run from Calabash, Bolivia, and Belleville, and they run 365 days a year. Again, that's picked up on Thanksgiving morning, Christmas morning, there will be someone checking that, taking it back. that, taking it back to the lab, so we can, again, build that historical pattern, see those historical trends of what's going on with the mosquito population. And late August, early September, the one with the nice hanging basket there, that's a CDC light trap. So we use those to primarily go after culicida melanera. They are the triple E vector, and we also set them for West Nile. If we have a dry period like we have, we can set those to try to catch on culex pippians for West Nile virus. So a little bit about biological control. The county has a couple ponds on county property that do have the common ditch minnow in it, gambusia finnis. We will actually go out, and if we do a side investigation and say, hey, yes, this place will warrant, or these fish can survive, the county will go out and catch cooler pools of minnows, and we'll take it to these people's property and dump it out. And if they request more, we'll go back and take cooler pool minnows back out there and put them back out there. They work great in abandoned swimming pools. A lot of people swear by them, and we use a lot of them on dredged disposal islands as well for the U.S. Army Corps. So tip and toss, source reduction. I've worked with Oak Island before at Earth Day, we did a tip and toss campaign several years ago. We're talking about 80s albo pickus, and this is the container species that lives in artificial containers through tarps, tires, buckets, grill baskets, plant containers, bird baths, French drains, anything that can hold water that is man-made, you'll see this mosquito show up at. It came in the, into the United States, it's invasive species, came in in the 1980s through tires, and has been here ever since. It displaced 80s agypthia in this area. And again, we will go out, you know, and dump toys. We've went through, we've did several tip and toss campaigns through several communities that had a large amount of 80s albo pickus, and we'll just go door to door asking, hey, can we go tip your stuff? Hey, can we go tip your stuff? Here's some information about these mosquitoes. And why it's super important to have an onsite investigation and do tip and toss for this particular mosquito is because this mosquito is a daytime flying mosquito. It goes up when the spray truck goes out. So the spray truck has little impact to this mosquito. So that's getting back to that public education and doing other things besides just routing a spray truck. Then occasionally, we have to do heavy equipment. So we do help manage a couple of the U.S. Army Corps dredge disposal sites, in which we will have to go in and mitigate the amount of surface water. So we do have the ability to deploy heavy equipment if needed. Larvae sighting. So this is controlling lar, you know, larval mosquitoes, those four instar stages. So a lot of the products that we use are organic certified, even down to the carrier. There are several products in our product line that we use that have a OMRI label. So that's the Organic Material Institute Review label that comes with these products. So basically, we put a naturally occurring bacteria, these, so the one up top that you're familiar with, that's bacillus thuringiensis israelus, that's the doughnut, and it's a naturally occurring bacteria they found in Israel. A lot of the stuff that you'll see that we use that come out of this backpack boiler here is a spinosid bacteria. Again, it's a, I think it's a spinosid A and D mixture, but it comes from, they found it in rum vats. And again, it's a naturally occurring bacteria. The spinosid one, even down to the carrier, is organic and comes with that certification. We use a lot of this product around our beekeepers. Our beekeepers like this product because, again, it's certified organic, they feel comfortable around it. So the spray truck, again, this should be one of the things that's last on our list. But again, if we meet, if we can't do it through public education, if we can't do it through tip and toss campaign, if we can't do it through larva sighting, if they don't meet our threshold of mosquitoes a minute, the right mosquitoes a minute, we will route a spray truck. So typically, these applications are done sometime right before dawn, or at dusk, when mosquitoes are most active. We do not have a set spray schedule with Brunswick County mosquito control. It's dictated by a rainfall event and site investigation. One thing I'd like to point out, that all of our spray applications are made basically when non-target insects or organisms are sequestered. So basically, they're hidden away, they're not actively out foraging. You don't have bees actively out foraging, or butterflies actively out foraging. Again, we're making these applications where these insects are sequestered, they're hidden away. Our ULV products do not, you know, leave any type of residue. They're there to target the adult mosquito that's flying at that current moment, at that current state. They do not have any residue. These machines are state mandated to be calibrated yearly, and that's followed up with our MPDS permit and with the NCDACS. So public education, this is part of our public education program, I'm here speaking with y'all. We have our brochures, we have our onsite home investigations, and that's probably one of the most valuable things that we do. We do our tip and toss media campaign, we do truck advertising, we will talk to POA, HOAs, do any public event that is presented to us to try to get our message out about tip and toss, and about what the county's program, as far as mosquito control is. So every year, we do hold a Brunswick County ULV workshop shop, and this is for all of our municipal partners, for the counties that are adjacent to us, anybody that would like to attend and learn about mosquito control. Basically, that day, we're going to bring our university partners down, we'll have a vendor there, we'll have the Department Health in North Carolina, Department Health and Human Services, we'll have the NCDMA, we'll have anybody from the state that'll show up and talk about mosquito control, to provide training to these folks that do mosquito control within the county. We do it that day. The next day, we will actually go out, the vendor provides free calibration for the ULV machine. So you show up, get your ULV machine calibrated, and you can check that box off that says, hey, I met that requirement for this year for the state. So let's talk a little bit about working with beekeepers and do not sprays. So every year, we go and talk to the Beekeepers Association. Having a open line of communication with these folks is the most valuable thing as far as when it comes to mosquito control. Also, we update our do not spray list yearly. That's something we go through at the beginning of the season, we look at the fish farms, our organic farmers, anybody that needs a special accommodation. So when we go out, we have some areas of concern, this is what's basically given to our spray techs. And we always try to use the same spray techs or vector techs in the same areas, so we can build a relationship with these folks, so they can say, hey, we know that guy, we know exactly what he wants. So we're going to provide the name, the address. If they don't have an address, we're going to give them a parcel number, or some sort of landmark within the county, a phone number, and a spray zone. And then also, we're going to look at, hey, is this person a beekeeper, a call before spray, are they a fish farm or organic farm? And then we'll make that accommodation. You know, if we run into, say, hey, we got a organic farmer or a beekeeper, you know, we might choose to use some of those larval products to go out instead of making an adult side application. So in 2017, 2018, we worked with a little bit, we worked with a little bit of, let's see, over 100-plus beekeepers, and this is kind of what they look like on our county map with our spray zones looking. Fast forward to 2023, we're at probably 200-plus, if you include all of our areas of concern, with our 33 spray zones, and the big green dot is a request. So you can see how we give all this information to our spray techs, and they can make that accommodation for these folks. So again, one of the most important things for, you know, if you're in an area of concern, is that open line of communication. You know, we always try to use the same texts, so we know those folks, we build a reputation with them, we come out, we visit with them, we see their hives, we know what's going on. Or if it's, you know, an organic farmer, or a fish farm, or anything like that, we try to make that accommodation and get to know them, so we can minimize any impact to their particular area. There's suggestions that we always, we're always looking for innovative and new ways. Again, we participate in a lot of training throughout the year, but, you know, saying, hey, have you tried a sprinkler system? Or why are you tending your hive like this? Or are you trying to wet burlap, you know, for protection of bees? So we're always on the cusp of trying to, you know, stay informed of what the newest technology and what the newest way to protect or minimize our application is to them. And then, lastly, you know, maybe we don't do any action, because, you know, maybe, you know, through communication with them, their hives are this person, they're far enough off the road, or they're in an area where it's really not going to affect them, and they've worked with us so much, they know our reputation, and, you know, they know that we're going to look out for them. I do want to note that in, I think it was after Hurricane Florence, we received in one week almost 10,000 service requests for mosquito control. So it's, it is a, it is a very shuffling the chairs around event to provide service and to protect these areas, but I feel like we do a pretty good job of it, and we try to stay on top of it. And so again, this is some of our contact information. If anybody has questions about bees, they can always contact the Brunswick County Co-op, or go to our website, or they can call our main line. And again, my information's here. Shoot me an email, give me a call. And with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we ask him questions, or do we just email him?
I think because of the sake of time, if you'd email him, I'd appreciate it. Or call him. Next is, are there any adjustments to the agenda, Council?
I just have one thing to note, please, and that is that the TAC agreement that's part of the contract with Water Rescue has been revised by all three parties, and some grammar changes and that sort of thing. And that's been distributed. Just want to note that that would be included with the contract. And also, there was one word added to the contract itself, again, with agreement of all the parties, and that was number nine. It was changed to read incident commander.
Excellent, thank you. So can we move on to public comment?
Well, we need to approve.
Excuse me?
I'll make a motion to approve the.
Need to approve the agenda.
Approve the agenda.
Oh, thank you, sorry.
All those in favor?
All those in favor. Public comment, please.
Yes. We have Andy Spradley.
Poor Andy. God bless you.
Good evening. Andy Spradley, 114 Southeast Sixth Street. Members of the council, thank you again. So Oak Island Beach Preservation is proud to announce its 2023 scholarship winners. Addison Valesquas, Emily Smith, both students from the Brunswick County Early College High School, who each received a $2,000 scholarship to help with their college expenses. Each of these students fulfilled the criteria that included maintaining a 3.0 GPA, writing an essay on how their past experience and future plans merge with Oak Island Beach Preservation's three areas of focus, which includes education, community engagement, and enhancing the beach experience. Due to the generous support of this community, through donations and participations in the recent auction, Oak Island Beach Preservation was able to award these scholarships. So again, I want to thank the community for their support and congratulate our two winners. On Sunday, June 11th, we had our first flash sweep of the season. This is where we get volunteers to meet at an access point and pick up garbage for five minutes, five minutes. There are not very many people in that picture. We did have a dog. But I want you to look at the amount of garbage we were able to pick up in five minutes. I checked this access point out, this was 76th Street on the east side. And it looked pretty clean to me when I first walked up there. Then I sent this crew out, and I want you to see what they got off the beach and out of the parking lot, so that our guests, and people visiting us, and our people in the community can enjoy these places. So this was a great team. And speaking of that, our next flash sweep is Monday, June 26th, at the East 32nd Street Access. Now, I know our news sheet, newsletter came out, and it had different times, the times that are on the news sheet are simply the low tide. All of our flash sweeps will be at 8:30 during the day. We would love to have you come out and help us keep our beaches clean. Please check on our Facebook page and our webpage for more dates and more access points during the season. Thank you all very much. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, town staff. My name is Terry Carter, and I reside at 101 Southwest 23rd Street. I've heard the expression about beating a dead horse, and I certainly don't intend to do that tonight, but let's talk trees. That sounds familiar to everyone, right? So it plays off the tagline that was used when we used it for sand, we need to talk about the long-needed renourishment and preservation of our beaches. And today, I would suggest that it appropriately applies to another one of Oak Island's greatest and unfortunately shrinking resources, our trees. And we have long needed to work on this. Our trees are an environmental resource which provides benefits far greater than my three minutes will allow me to tell you about. I believe we, as a community, are standing on the precipice that will determine if we are serious about our tree resources or not. I commend the town because we are finally starting to do meaningful work, and I hope that quick progress will come forth from the stakeholders who all have a vested interest in this environmental commodity and have agreed to work together. That's a positive thing. The town itself, our residents, our visitors, and our local builders, all have a stake in what we do for our trees and the preservation and protection of those resources. The tree issue doesn't operate in a silo of its own, however, and I think that's important to note. There are components of development and preservation and protection that must work together. We have to have strong ordinances. We have to educate folks. In some cases, we have to incentivize folks. We have to find compromise around the issues of building a house. We have to use and continue to seek out stormwater management methods that avoid the large pits and the root mat cutting of our trees. Tree preservation and stormwater, whether we like it or not, are inextricably linked together. We have to have stronger code enforcement, we have to have processes in place that utilize the strong experience of our town forester and our planning director, and we have to equip them and support them in their enforcement efforts. If you look at the stormwater section on the town's website, there are a number of best practices to help manage stormwater mitigation. Things like installing rain barrels to capture and reuse water, planting rain gardens in trees to improve runoff infiltration, selecting impervious building materials for hardscapes, which allows water to quickly flow through and not over the surface. And I can tell you from personal experiences that having a gravel driveway is not the worst thing in the world. I challenge the town to continue supporting our staff. I challenge our staff to continue looking for emerging technologies and new ways to manage stormwater, and thus contribute to the sustainability of trees. I challenge our other stakeholders to come together with open minds and their expertise to find a balance and workable solutions that are fair to our builders and to folks who have the right to develop their properties, and at the same time, protect and preserve our tree canopy, which in the end will benefit us all. So I'll leave you with the question I referenced earlier. Are we serious about preserving and protecting our trees, or are we not? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Bob Chulo, 163 Northeast Third Street. Madam Mayor, Town Council members. A special thank you to Councilman Bach and Councilman Kraft for your comments on establishing dates for the UDO deliverables. You know, the term kicking the can, slow walking, is maybe an unintentionally harsh term, so certainly deep apologies for everybody. But you know, the residents of Oak Island, this is what they see and hear. They're looking for progress. Some topics and issues seem to linger for many, many months, but seemingly no progress. You know, there's a joke, how do you eat an elephant? What's the answer? One bite at a time. So, perhaps we look at a series of minor changes to UDOs which give us immediate protection and not wait for one sweeping change of each. You know, a neighbor of mine, I was talking to her the other day, and she shared this comment with me. She said, "I suggest to our town leaders, don't be like Goldilocks, waiting for a mattress which sleeps perfectly before taking action. Find one which is near-perfect, allowing for a compromise." Councilmember Bach used the term rocket docket when it comes to both UDOs. So, let's get both on a rocket docket, find that near-perfect mattress, and protect the residents of Oak Island. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council members, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. As far as the UDO, the planning and zoning that we've heard going on here tonight, I applaud you kicking this can down the road so it speaks. Get it right. We've got to get it right. We've all seen what's going on with this island, the development, et cetera. We've got to get this thing right for the future of this island. Another thing I'd like to talk about is pedestrian safety. I am scared to death that someone, maybe even in my family, is going to get run over trying to cross Oak Island Drive. It is horrible. I know that there, or at least I think there are things in the work from 51st down to about 64th. The other end scares me to death, just trying to go to the beach. I'm sorry, I didn't say where I live, 7004 East Yacht Drive. Just trying to cross from 70th to go to the beach. I'm literally scared sometimes doing it with the amount of traffic. With the paid parking now, there seems to be a lot more people parking on the northeast side, at friends, relatives, neighbors, et cetera, and then walking to the beach. Let's don't get somebody run over before we can do something about pedestrian safety. I don't know what the answer is. I know those are DLT, state and local out of roads. You guys can appeal to the state to try to get something done, crosswalks, et cetera. Please do something about that. Finally, street paving. Everybody likes to kick around the street paving. I don't know what the protocol is for how you go about deciding what streets to pave and when, but you don't need protocol and intelligence to know that 51st Street has a stoplight at it. It's one of the worst streets on this island. There's a lot of people going to use it because they can go to that stoplight and get out onto the highway. Have that road paved, for Christ's sake. We don't need reverse speed bumps that are like the... Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you for being here, Town Council. My name is Bob Jakus at 109 Southeast 22nd Street. And I am here to just reiterate what I was speaking of last time, and I was support of Caroline's petition related to spraying. And just, I guess, basically, out of some kind of fear that the pesticides and things are dangerous, and as the man from Brunswick County said earlier this evening, he briefly said, you know, there is no pesticide that really is safe. And so, I know last week or last month, when I was here, I spoke with you about the commonly used lawn pesticides and how there's some really bad stuff going on with those. And I spoke about maybe taking a course for town council people or municipal officials, and who can, you know, take a course on professional, you know, on building, transitioning to a safe kind of management of care, asking the mayor to convert to organic lawn care and land care in our public places. And then I mentioned something last month about the county, Warren County, where they were talking about having their supporting and the entire county, sort of a pesticide-free practice and policies. And so, the language in beyondpesticides.org, which is the website from which I got this information, there's about, maybe about 21 kind of policy ideas, language that's already written. And if you were to go to the beyondpesticides.org website and look at some of the links that they have there, there's all this already written, we don't have to reinvent the wheel kind of policy and decision-making that's been undertaken by the county board. And I think at a town level, it would be interesting and exciting to sort of adopt some of the language that they're using. So, for example, I'm going to run through in the next one minute, about 21 whereases, heretofores, therefore's, and be it resolves, just for fun, just to say, so here's some of the stuff they said. "In supportive environmental action team, environmental justice documentation project, whereas it's appropriate to preserve our natural resources, to ensure a natural and healthy vibrant community, and whereas many threats exist that will endanger clean air, pure water, and a healthy way of life for Warren County and surrounding areas, we have begun a project to document such threats to our community." And I think then documenting threats to the community could be part of a, I'm a teacher by trade, too, retired, but to have kids involved in developing hands-on center technologies and things. Preserve records of environmental for future generations to come. The county has resolved that it fully supports efforts to develop best management practices to enhance pollinator habitats. So, I know my time is up, but there's all these neat things that are just, the language is there, and it would be really awesome to see y'all adopt it and for our citizens to sort of support that kind of a thing. And so, without further ado, I will step away from the microphone, and thank you so much for your service. I'm grateful to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Wilson. Dr. Wilson is representing a group, so we've, I've agreed to give him five minutes.
I have a presentation. I don't know if I can get it going here. Is Mike around?
Yeah, he'll get it to you here. He's right in there. He'll get it to you in just a second. He sees you.
Got it up on my thing. But I'm going to be speaking today about botanical insecticides, which is a, which are plant-based, rather than being synthetic. Oh, I did.
I'm hoping to get us out of here.
It wasn't your green.
I thought we pulled up earlier.
We did.
Exactly. In me, in me.
If I need to... Connected.
Yeah, that's not the problem. It's the jack. If you can see how loose it is in there. Yeah.
It's what it was working before, huh? Well, I do have a full presentation, but I can kind of, I have the paperwork in front of me as well, so I can do the speaking presentation, you just don't see all the pictures. And it's unfortunate, because my wife really worked hard to make it really very aesthetic. But my name is Dr. Robert Wilson. I live at 328 Northeast 48th Street on Oak Island, and I appreciate you letting me talk today. I'm Madam White and I'm a councilwoman. I wanted to talk a little bit about, again, botanical insecticides versus synthetic insecticides. And basically, the science of botanical insecticides is that they are developed from plants. And plants naturally produce compounds to protect themselves from insects. And the essential oils from these compounds can be isolated, and they're isolated by grinding the plant material and then pressing them, and then using other physical methods to purify them, but not chemically alter them, so that you're still getting the extract oils. These oils work in a variety of different ways to try and inhibit insects. Either they affect them from a neurotoxic, anticoagulant, or endocrine systems that are specific to insects. And there are a variety of plants that have been used in the past, thyme, cinnamon, rosemary, lemongrass, cloves, citric peppermint, all very effective as insecticides, but harmless to humans and animals. And synthetic insecticides, again, they do come from plants, the chemicals, but they're chemically altered to enhance their effect, make them last longer, make them not degrade, that sort of thing. But those same steps can actually make them harmful to humans, animals, and the environment. And so, in developing these botanicals, they've avoided those kinds of steps to make them safer. Biomist is the chemical that is used in Oak Island to help control adult mosquitoes. And it's 3% permethrin, 15% pepper noral toxide, and 82% other ingredients, which include petroleum distillates. It is toxic to both people and animals by skin exposure, eye exposure, inhalation, or ingestion, such that it's required that all people wear PPE, and they be distributed in an enclosed cockpit. All possible exposures, it's required immediate removal of the PPE, and then thorough washing prior to any eating, drinking, or smoking. If there's a significant exposure, they recommend that we call poison control. And of course, swallowing, skin exposure, and skin exposure and eye exposure, all it's required is about 20 minutes of flushing, inhalation. They're going to try to keep the person calm and provide oxygen as needed, but if the person stops breathing, of course, you'd have to provide CPR. Swallowing, they don't recommend inducing vomiting, or giving oral fluids until, because of the petroleum nature. The environmental hazards of the synthetics include that they are toxic to aquatic organisms, including fish, marine animals, and they're hazardous to exposure to the water, whether it's the edge, the marsh, the estuaries, or the rivers or streams, including runoff. They're highly toxic to bees and other pollinators, and they do not recommend that they be used in a meter release system, or for outdoor residential misting systems. And they're not to be used near crops, water supplies, or other outdoor animals. Botanicals, on the other hand, they have a variety of modes of action that enhance their effectiveness. Usually, they're composed of several different oils, or at least three or four different oils, and they vaporize them. And by vaporizing them, they have a repelling effect, which is very important. It significantly increases the range of the effect of these types of material, of the botanicals. The vapor phase acts to repel mosquitoes from the surrounding areas, and it flushes them out of hidden places, and if it contacts them, it kills them. So, botanicals both quickly kill, flush, and repel mosquitoes from their locale. And the diversity of the combined agents increases their effectiveness, and at the same time, decreases their acquired resistances that we often develop if we have a single agent. So, it helps from that standpoint. The advantages of botanical insecticides are that they have reduced fish and animal toxicity, and it's because of their natural plant origin and the fact that they're biodegradable. They can be sprayed along any water's edge, on docks, over water and marshes to reduce active mosquitoes, and up and down the roads, like they do with their spray machines. They are biodegradable, so they do not accumulate in groundwater, and so they may be sprayed on impervious surfaces. They have significant reduced risk to pollinators and bees, primarily because of the repelling effect, because you repel the insects away, then they can come back later to, you know, to go to the plants, that sort of thing, and they're not killed by the spray. They can also be used in front of schools and educational facilities without prior clearance.
Dr. Wilson, are you almost done?
Almost done. I'm on my last slide.
All right.
Even though we didn't have the slide.
We're just watching the clock.
Yeah, I saw, I just went over. So, in conclusion, the synthetic pesticides are harmful to our environment, our animals, humans, and bees, where botanical insecticides, while protecting crops and plants from insects and clearing mosquitoes from outside living areas, do not adversely affect the animals, people, or bees, or other pollinators. And they are competitive in cost with synthetic insecticides, like Biomist. And I did call today, made some phone calls today, to just check on prices, and I found that a 55-pound drum of Icovia Pyrythium, which is the one you use for mosquitoes, it's pretty expensive, $19,000. But if you buy it from Dia Pest Control, it's $15,500. So, it is, you can't get it for a lower cost, just using a different manufacturer, or I mean distributor. And the cost of the Biomist runs about $17,600 per 55-gallon drum, according to what I found online. So, the prices are comparable. The botanicals are more effective, have a wider range, but don't cause damage to environment and aren't dangerous to humans, animals, and we don't have to deal with all the poisonings, a tremendous amount of poisonings with these type of agents worldwide. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Bridgette Venema? Did I pronounce that right this time?
Pardon me?
Did I pronounce that right this time?
Venema, yes, you did, thank you. Bridgette Venema, 3444 Lake Club Circle in Oak Island. First of all, thank you for this forum, and thank you for giving all residents a platform to speak publicly. It's such a precious democratic privilege, so I appreciate that. And also, thank you to the one of you, or many of you, who did listen to my previous concerns and comments, and who did their duty by employing others to do their jobs. There was a flurry of activity at the lakes at Pine Forest in the days following the April Town Council meeting, and some immediate improvement was made at our properties. I did hear from the representative from the Thomas Soffield Development Company, SC he had promised to reach out to me. Mr. Henry said he was waiting on direction and information from Mr. Patterson as to where and how the silt fences should be installed on our property. Some silt fences were erected around the construction sites, and one silt fence about 60 feet long was erected along an empty lot perimeter. However, since that week in April, little to no progress has continued in the areas of erosion and sediment control, and with erosion control, the maintenance plan, which was outlined in the master plan of the Pine Forest plantation that this council approved. For example, there is significant blockage of the storm sewer drains in the curbs, some of which have vegetation visibly growing out of them. Water drainage is impaired. There are several piles two-inch deep of eroded sand and sediment in the street and curbs, and the erosion continues to run off into the retention ponds. Every rainfall is a runoff producing event. There's visible blowing and drifting of topsoil and sand from the Soufield developer-owned lots onto private residence and private property, and there are no seeded, fertilized, reseeded, nor mulched areas in approximately two or three football fields of undeveloped land owned by Soufield. There is no vigorous nor dense vegetation cover as per the master plan specifications. So there is communal concern among the lakes at Pine Forest residents with the degradation to the surrounding property, the compromised public infrastructure, and the general dismissal of our communication and requests to improve our Oak Island neighborhood from the Thomas Soufield Equity Investments entity. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all. Signed up, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Let's move to council reports, mayor and council. You want to start, Mr. Wach?
Yes, in view of the hour, I'll say only two things. One, I would salute the valor of our Beach Service Unit and Fire Department. You have to ask yourself whether you would go into that water, and they did. So that is an extraordinary thing, and I salute them for that. I also want to congratulate the mayor, the manager, for their success at the CDC. For all of you on Beatron who are imperiled or at risk, you've been pardoned.
No report.
Quickly, also, I've asked a lot of questions about where we stand on developing the new REC Center. Been told that some information is coming shortly, so stay tuned. Hopefully, that information is coming shortly, where we can get that off-center and get going on that. Secondly, if you all remember last year, we gave Tree to Sea Awards to three very deserving Oak Island residents. It might be getting close to that time again. If any of you have someone in mind that you think has gone over and above to betray a very good citizen for Oak Island, we sure would like to recognize them. Tell any of the town council members someone that you think, because we're all in this together. One last thing I want to say is a shout-out to Ginger Bowen Craft, Bill Craft's wife. Tonight is our anniversary, and I'm here. So I better put a shout-out out there. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Bollington?
I just want to mention the fact that I'm excited about the coming together on the tree issue. I guess we're on a good track there.
Mr. Martin?
Just very briefly, to echo Councilman Wach's comments about our public safety and our response, I would just add to that, hats off to this council. Two budget cycles ago, we made public safety a commitment, and we committed to that, and it may have taken two budget cycles, but we have put together what I think is a strategic public safety in the forefront by adding the Beach Services Division in the previous budget cycle to the Police Department, and now we have the Fire Department adding resources and having a presence on the beachfront. So just hats off to this council for making public safety a priority and getting it done. I think we're going to see continued improvements in that area going forward. So just a thank you to all first responders and to this council for making that happen. Thanks.
To echo those remarks, Mr. Martin and Mr. Wach, I was able to, honored actually, to attend a celebration of life and dedication of the rescued tube stand at 46th Street to the woman, Toni Watts, who passed away almost a year ago. She drowned. And that was in part an impetus for the public safety on the beach. We have an excellent layered response, and it's wonderful to know that all of that effort, thank you to the Helbig Foundation and the staff, the town of Oak Island, that that layered response system is working. And Mr. Kelly, Sam Morrison from Moffitt and Nickel, Mr. Edwards, who am I leaving out?
Courtney.
Courtney, thank you.
Courtney Delane, yes.
And I did go to New Bern to present our beach management plan for the first time. The municipality got to speak on behalf of the plan. It wasn't just a written plan that was submitted. Everyone did an excellent job, and it resulted in a unanimous decision on the parts of the commission. So the importance of that, it's not just that it's a plan, but it's a plan that protects our island, our infrastructure, our revenue, significant revenue stream for us that's viable or important to our town. But most importantly, we've met the state's first requirement for getting assistance for the beach, which we've been working on for quite a long time. And we've had the support of both Representative Miller and Senator Raybon. They deserve a big thank you for the $20 million that they've given us, that we've been able to match with budget dollars, thanks to this council. And there's so much more work to be done on the beach, and by meeting this requirement, we'll be able to have state support, hopefully, for making that all happen. So you'll hear more about that and a Mr. Craft's statement about the REC Center. We are working on a REC Center plan. It'll be presented in July, so it will circulate very soon to council, and you'll get a first blush at what our thoughts are, and you'll be able to respond to that in July's meeting. Thank you, that's all I have. Approval consent agenda? Do we have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Excellent, thank you, unanimous. Committee appointments. First is...
Wait, you skipped one.
What did I skip? Removed from the consent agenda? We didn't remove any of it.
Speed limit on Airport Road.
That was removed.
Consent agenda.
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. No, thank you, it's important. Committee appointments. So the first vote is for three terms ending in 2026, June 2026, on the Environmental Advisory Committee, and there are three candidates: Elise Snavely, David Sonnenfeld, and Derek Williams. Get to sign your ballot. Also, they might be voting at the same time. There is an unexpired term on the Environmental Advisory Committee, two candidates for that, Sue Davidson and Derek Williams. And then there's also an unexpired term ending in March of 2025 for the Recreation Advisory Board, and the only applicant for that is John Shading.
Three regulars. Yep. What if you don't want three?
Just put wherever you want it.
Oh, okay.
I got them all. Recreation. Recreation.
Did I go right in?
I'm gonna have one more for Charlie.
Yeah, I got Charlie.
Okay.
Who are we missing?
Charles.
Charlie's napping.
If I'm close, can I have the ice? Can I have the lime?
How close? Within 10.
I was gonna ask for 30.
Take that. I'll take that.
Close session, get it done.
We're waiting on you, Charlie.
Yeah, I'm in no hurry. Short meeting, what the heck.
Let me borrow that mallet right there, because I'm gonna throw it at you.
Wait, man, I changed my mind. Wait.
You take your time, Charlie.
I have to.
You don't need to go verify.
What are you coming over for now?
I just did, oh, you don't need to verify.
I have a tally sheet and everything.
Everybody's, all these columns. I mean, I trust your math better than I do.
Yeah. 100%. They all did. One more. Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, Mayor, with, we have two appointments, it looks like, for the Environmental Advisory Board, open terms, and that was, would be Elise Snavely and David Sonnenfeld. And then we have one appointment for the unexpired term, and that would be Sue Davidson. And then we had one appointment for the Recreation Advisory Board, and that is John Shading.
Excellent, thank you, council. So that will re-advertise that opens, that one open seat?
Yes, ma'am. And if I could note also, that we'll be advertising, the next positions we'll be advertising for will be three members for the planning board, and I'm still advertising for two alternate members for the Board of Adjustment. Make everyone aware of that.
Yep, thank you. We're looking for, those are important positions, and we're looking for good candidates. Thank you, council, and congratulations to all the appointees. Administrative reports, Mr. Kelly.
Yes, ma'am, we have a few of those. Ms. Wills, our Economic Development Administrator, is going to come up and provide you an update on a few things that she's been working on.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I'd like to walk y'all through the addition of the Economic Development section on our website, if you'll bear with me a second. So I've added seven new pages that will encompass the Economic Development section, a homepage here, and since this is a new department for the town, spent a little bit of time defining what it is and what the main functions will be, and kind of a graph here to show the importance of economic development, and why we spend time focusing on it. So that's kind of the homepage. Then there's the Choose OKI section, which really serves as the business attraction section of the pages. This will be for businesses who are considering locating here, and kind of all the information they may need to consider. So location, demographics, and a lot of that data, quality of life, and each of the sections have kind of a drop-down menu, so if you, the cultural arts and attractions, if we can click on that, it'll open and list all of our wonderful cultural arts and attractions with links out to the sites. So with each of these, that's the case, they'll drop down, so recreation, it'd be a little blurb about each one. And then the next section is infrastructure, so all of these sections collapse and open up if we can keep scrolling. Yep, we've got fiber and telecom, electricity, water and sewer. I made sure to add the Cape Fear Regional Jet Port in there, and again, they all link out to the website. So it's just a little blurb to catch interest, and then where they can go for more information. Also have a section about taxes and incentives, so our local tax information, state, and then the state and county incentives, where they can find more information about those. So this is the Choose OKI page. The next one's going to be the Business Directory. This was a feature that was previously on the website, but I've worked with Mike, and we kind of pulled it under Economic Development now. So I'm going to spend some time focusing on this, so more businesses take advantage of it, and we cleaned it up, so it's only current businesses. This can be a really good resource, especially in towns where people want to support small businesses, and a lot of small businesses that don't have the resources to have a big online presence, and kind of some obscure industries, or people that have home businesses and things like that. This will be a great resource for people to find those places. So Grow Your Business, the next page, is meant for existing businesses, place they can come to know that economic development is doing something for them. I detail our business retention program, so this will basically be meetings with our department, which is me, and staff of me. So ideally, you'd like to touch every business in three years. My goal is to get half of the businesses in one year, so that's what I'm working towards in the business retention program. And at the bottom here are some resources for businesses that commonly have been used, and I will add and update that as needed. So these are all kind of still working in progress, but wanted to get it up and going so people know, number one, the department is here now, this is a resource we have, and some of the things that we're going to be doing. So the next page is Tourism Counts. This was in collaboration with The Chamber. They have started a campaign to talk about the benefits of tourism and why it's important. So this is a lot of the information and things that were relevant for our economic development in the town. And this is a campaign they plan to do every year, so I will update those numbers annually to reflect that. The next page is Development Activity. So this will kind of give brief summaries of current projects that are happening, and this is meant mostly for attractions, so that people can see we have other things going on, but also as a point for reference for people interested in these topics. So these are probably the three biggest commercial ones, and I've just put a short summary and the latest town action on them, and kind of where each of them is, and where to find more information if available. And the last page is Available Properties. So this is available for purchase or for lease, and at the top there, I have a place where people can submit it if it's not on there. But my plan is to update this monthly. Mike was able to help me with the map here, so he could see it visually, and then again, it's that same drop-down function with each listing, and then click out to the listing agent's website for more information. You got it. Okay, and that's the last one of those seven pages. Okay, and that's the last one of those seven pages. Um, and again, I hope to add on and edit these as it goes. It's just a starting point, um, as a way to start marketing ourselves for business. I'd be happy to answer any questions or take suggestions.
First, let me say, that's very impressive. Thank you. Uh, have you had any hits? Have, have people been responding to this? Is the word out?
I haven't, um, tracked that as of yet. Hope to, um, do a little social media campaign on our, um, with Mike and work on that, so people can know about it. But wanted to get all the content straight before we pushed it out.
Very good first step.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Looks like a good launch.
Great.
Congratulations. Very exciting.
Thanks.
Uh, we'll go on to the next. Uh, Mike's got a few more little things to click on here in just a second. Um, but the town staff, along with the mayor, hosted the annual review or workshop uh, of our hurricane procedures for the Town of Oak Island with Castle Beach, Coast Guard, and Brunswick County. Uh, we discussed different aspects of the plan from pre-storm, during the storm, and post-storm, our responses. Uh, we reviewed our evacuations and re-entry plans, the process for closing the bridges, curfews, alcohol sales, and those kind of items. Staff also, um, provided details of the new policies, which the county wants to implement, uh, to protect the infrastructure, uh, for wholesale and retail customers. Uh, they are looking at a storm surge and flood inundation. That's been our biggest issues for our sewer system, as you know, uh, during the storms. Uh, the collection systems and treatment facilities cannot handle all the flows from the extra water after the storms. Um, Oak Island will look at shutting down the collection system during the storm events, uh, along the beachfront areas. We provide maps of these areas on our webpage and through other media outlets. And then as we get the system back online, we indicate changes in possible anticipation, service dates, and times. Uh, this is not something that happens within twelve hours. People need to remember that it takes longer to get the system back up than, and we get there as fast as we can, and we start bringing it up as fast as we can. But, um, the thing about the sewer system, people know they have the caps out there in the yards, and they believe that's a drainage system for their front yard. Uh, so those people that open those caps, and we start draining the water in their yards, all we're doing is backing up the neighbors. And now their waste is starting to, um, be disposed of in their own yard. Um, but after we get done, we evaluate everything that we have. Uh, Matt's people, damage assessment, everything has to go out. We have to get the utility providers, cable people, everybody comes on, we evaluate the whole island, see what we can start bringing back online, and see what we can open back up. Um, the mayors are the only ones that can close the bridge. Uh, forty mile an hour sustained winds, that don't mean a gust, uh, sustained winds. Uh, we no longer park any kind of equipment or anything on the side of the bridge. Uh, we pull our staff back, uh, for safety reasons. Um, but it, it was a good workshop for all of us, and they got some things out there that we need to talk about. We did have, uh, David McIntyre, Brunswick County Emergency Deputy Director. He came by and he presented us, uh, the latest changes that the county has. Um, and also let us know that the West Brunswick High School will be a special needs facility, and that pets were allowed there as well. Um, they're also switching from Code Red to a new notification program on August first. So the last week in July, before it goes online, they're gonna start sending out blast for everybody to sign up for the new, um, Code Red, it's a new name, program, so they can be notified if a storm or whatever needs that you have, um, as far as oxygen, or need to be transported off the island, or those kind of things. Uh, they've also made a few changes at the Mercher, Emergency Operations Center. Uh, number of elected officials are now reduced, uh, and the departments, uh, all the department heads and assistant directors and all those kind of things, they're out in the fields. Um, having all the people in the office was a good thing at one time, but we all realize that everybody needs to be out uh, banally in the field and being able to do their jobs. And so those kind of things changed around as well. Uh, staff is also looking at possibly bringing back the Hurricane sticker re-entry plan for the 2024 season. That is something we'll talk about, uh, during the fall, um, this year. Um, a little update on paid parking. Um, a brief overview on where we're at. Um, this is a work in progress, as we all know, and I, I think everybody else out there knows as well. Um, but, um, we can only put so many signs on this island before it starts to sink. And, and the more signs we put out in the way, we get in the way of water rescue and everything else that we need to put out there, and we need to make sure people don't block the accesses and everything. As we put the signs that we're having to put out there, we're trying to see if these work better, and we remove some other ones as we put new ones up. Um, the biggest problem we're having is, uh, and we got the electronic signs out there trying to help us, uh, no bumper, no parking. Um, if you don't have it, you, you don't park. Uh, but people are starting to understand that, I believe. Uh, but everybody has their own little interpretation of what it really means. Um, it's mainly visitors. Locals, I think, are starting to get the, the sort of concept of what we have. Um, we know we don't have enough parking spaces. We didn't have enough parking area before. We had paid parking. Um, so those things have it changed. Uh, just to give you sort of a reference, uh, this past weekend's numbers. Uh, Saturday, uh, we had twenty-one hundred people parking this past Saturday. Uh, that's a lot of people in and out during the day. The vendor had seventeen hundred scans of the license tags. Uh, they issued a hundred and sixty violations. Um, parking areas over a hundred. We had Middleton Parking behind Town Hall here. That lot had the most at a hundred and ninety-seven reeds. Barbie Boulevard, a hundred and forty-two. And then Six Oh Four Ocean had a hundred and four. What we're seeing, and we have the data that we're starting to be able to track, is people come across the bridge on the Yopon side, and they just go park. Uh, they don't ride any further than they have to. They start filling in to see where they can park, and, and you can see that looking through the west end. Um, so we, we tried to say, you know, there's additional parking in other places, so hopefully they'll start to move down. Um, as you know, we have a meeting with a contractor at the end of the season to work out the goods and the bads. There is some goods, but there's bads as well. Um, so we'll work all that at the end. Uh, total spaces, uh, that we have, uh, we're up to thirteen hundred and eighty spaces, plus or minus one or two maybe today. It's a moving target. Scott just loves to count parking spaces. Um, Barbie has eighty-two spaces. Uh, resident owner spaces, we're up to two hundred and forty-seven. So we're starting to get that climb that Council asks us to get more in. Um, so that, that's sort of what we're seeing. Um, let's see, the old spaces, we had a hundred and fifty-two and a hundred and eighty-six, so we had made some progress. Uh, Mr. Hatton, as usual, will give his, um, financial report in July for the last quarter, and paid parking numbers will be in there as well. Um, I can tell you this past week, uh, the last seven days, uh, ended on Sunday. Um, the town's seventy percent portion, uh, bring home was about sixty-four thousand dollars. That's all we made for that week. Um, then we get to Beach Day. I'm giving Heather a little time off here. Uh, Beach Day activities will be going on at Milton Park, in the beach area in front of the Cabanas, out there, uh, sandcastles and those kind of things will be going on. A lot of family activities for all ages. Um, end of Beach Day, from six to nine, we have the Carl Newton Review Band and a shag contest will be going on behind, uh, Town Hall there at the amphitheater. At Oak Island Pier, we have the Doresman Band playing from six to nine, with the fireworks show starting around nine oh five. Um, a full list of activities can be seen on the town's page, as Mike hasn't pulled up here. Um, but we need to remember, the police also have a page on there about how to get out, in and out of town, and what kind of traffic and, and those kind of things that they'll be doing for that. Then we have to load the fireworks, and we have some of the road and the beach shut down for a little while while we load the fireworks. Um, but there's the, um, how to get on and off the island after the fireworks. So you may want to know if you need to go left or right, where you need to be. Uh, the Cabana, um, it should be open next week. There's a few check, um, check items that we need to finish. Um, but I, I think we should have that open before the, um, July Fourth holiday. And just a reminder, this is everybody, this is our twenty-fourth anniversary. Uh, next year is the big twenty-fifth, so, um, we'll see what we can plan and, and have a little bit bigger show and more things going through for that year. Um, then I have the two chiefs, Fire Chief, you wanna come up? He's just gonna give you a brief update on things that we're doing.
Thank you, Manager Kelly. Um, in this year's upcoming, we're adding two positions, working ten to six, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, to perform beach patrols. Uh, in the beginning of May, we began training and utilizing our current duty staff that patrol the beach in our QRV, and as we can already tell, that program has paid off. The program's also gonna be enhanced with the purchase of a rescue water scrap, watercraft or jet ski in this July. Uh, we'll work closely with our agency partners, training on the utilization of this craft. In addition to the rescue program, this should allow for rapid deployment in aid in water rescues. Another exciting thing that is happening is our new fire truck will be here on October tw- or, excuse me, August twelfth. Brand-new Pierce Enforce will provide us with many years of improved response, safety to the firefighters, reduce maintenance of our aging fleet. Uh, we'd like to thank the Council and the Manager for the support of this addition to the Water Rescue Services and the purchase of the new en- the new engine, as you can see us up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief Morris? You're still awake back there. You need to come on, hold on.
So a couple of updates on two different, uh, topics. Uh, first of all, is Bert, the Beach Services Unit, as we've rolled in here to our, of our second year. Um, of course, I think we've been, uh, very successful with our Beach Services. It's, uh, it went from two employees, uh, patrolling the beach from ten A, ten AM to six PM. Now we have three, uh, on the UTVs, uh, which I think has drastically helped our presence as a town. And our visibility, the accessibility, um, has, has, uh, definitely improved. Uh, of course, we had the water rescue, uh, and that was a, an awesome job by Mr. Kohunt. And, uh, but I have some numbers here for you, uh, that, uh, Beach Services has done, uh, this year. Uh, one of the things that we, Beach Services, not doing is parking this year. So we are, we are able to focus, uh, completely on the beach, uh, which has, um, helped our unit a- as well. So, um, one thing, uh, is near and dear to a lot of folks is the dunes. Uh, I think that, um, I, I need to go, if I checked the numbers from last year, I think our numbers are, ha- have declined a little on the nine-one-one calls for the dunes, uh, because we do have that presence, and we, you know, we are educating people and talking to people, and we're, you know, we've issued citations this year, so, uh, hopefully that'll stay in a consistent manner. But, uh, you know, our weekend really didn't, or our, our season really didn't kick off until last weekend. Not this past weekend, but the weekend before. Think the weather has kept a lot of folks away, uh, through Memorial Day. So, uh, thing, uh, things come up, new things come up. We had a couch on the beach, you know, last night, and, uh, you know, um...
I need that back, by the way.
Yeah. Charlie, I knew you let them borrow that, but, uh...
I read it.
Yeah. So, um, uh, new things come up on the beach, and, you know, we address it, and, uh, we address the, you, that's one thing that Beach Services addressed immediately, uh, yesterday. And the young folks that were there that carried it to the beach, you know, immediately agree, agreed when they got done, they would take it off the beach. So we handled the problem that way, and it wasn't back today, so it, it worked. But, uh, we've, um, when I give you these numbers, um, you know, this is a, this is a, a, a collaboration of verbal warnings, uh, written citations, um, the education pon- a component of it. And Beach Services this year has been operating for thirty-seven days. Uh, seven days a week, just want to reiterate that. So we have a total of, um, three hundred and seventy sand dune interactions, uh, where we have touched base with three hundred and seventy different people so far. Uh, dogs at large is a hundred and fifty-one. Uh, glass, uh, glass containers on the beach is a hundred and forty-eight. Uh, holes, which is kind of the emerging problem, you know, on the beach this year, you know, we see it on social media. Uh, we have, we've addressed three hundred and fifty-six, uh, holes on the beach, uh, so far. And, uh, not so much with electric bikes or hu- or hoverboards, we've had eight. Um, our emergency accesses, we have, um, had five hundred and forty contacts so far, moving folks out of the emergency, emergency accesses. Um, and that's a, uh, that's an effort between Beach Services and also the Beach Ambassadors. That, that's not Beach Ambassador's numbers, but I know that they're on the beach every day, and, you know, they, they move folks, and they talk, and they educate about holes and dunes. Th- this is, you know, completely separate from that operation. Um, and, uh, one is communication with citizens. So we've had sixteen hundred and ninety-five, uh, contacts with citizens, um, each day. So these numbers at, at, at the end of each Beach Services shifts, at the end of shift, they come in, and they write down, uh, what they've done, and this is a total of, uh, a, a combination of what they've done in thirty-seven days. One other thing that, uh, I think has helped us is, uh, the communication aspect. Um, uh, we push out a daily, a daily bulletin. Um, Sarah does, Sarah pushes out that daily bulletin that keeps all Beach Services, regardless if they're working or not working. It keeps them informed, it keeps me informed, it keeps the town ma- Mr. Kelly informed. So I think that's, uh, that's also, uh, have been, has been a helpful component, just to keep everybody i- in the loop. Um, so, uh, and we've had so far this year, one missing, uh, um, or stolen rescue tube, uh, that we immediately replaced. Uh, we bought ten extra last year, uh, in anticipation, and we knew that some were gonna get stolen or swept away, uh, or taken away, so we were prepared for that, and we immediately, uh, replaced that rescue tube. And I, I think that's about it. Um, I look forward to the season. You know, with Beach Services, we have an energetic group. Uh, they're here for the right reasons, they do a good job on the beach. Uh, some days, that's a hard job. You know, some days, that's a difficult job. Uh, but that, you know, our group is mature, they approach the problems, um, uh, level-headed and common sense-wise, and, uh, uh, that's what I like. Uh, I like them to approach that, the problems, and talking to people. And, uh, but we had a, we had a debrief, um, earlier this week, and, you know, they're, a lot of times, they're the face of the town. You know, the citizens come here, the tourists, and, you know, that's what they see up and down the beach. And, uh, you know, they take that very seriously. So, uh, um, I just want you guys to know that as well. And, uh, but I think that, that wraps it up for Beach Services. If anybody has any questions, I, I'll be glad to address any, any issues or questions that you guys have.
No, just thank you both.
Perfect.
Chief Price and Chief Morris for the excellent job that you do. Your leadership is appreciated.
Thank you.
So then the last update we have is Brunswick County Draft Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Um, the council and citizens regarding work being done on this. Um, plan has, had their public input sessions have been held, and comments have been collected and are being reviewed. Um, and there's a site on our, um, webpage where you can click on it and see the plan. Oak Island is one of the adopting agencies, and there will be a presentation scheduled for later this summer or in the fall, before Council is asked to approve the CTP. And then that's our report.
Thank you very much. A lot going on. Old Business Proposed Amendment to Chapter Twenty-Eight of the Court of Ordinances, Traffic.
You're up, Matt.
All right, I don't even have slides for you for this one. We're just gonna rock and roll. Um, we talked last month briefly about, uh, proposed amendments to the ordinance that deals with mobility assistance devices. Um, our current ordinance has locational standards for these things, permitting requirements, et cetera. Um, staff's opinion was that, uh, basically, if you're in an electronic wheelchair, if you feel comfortable trying to take down an electronic wheelchair on the beach, go for it. Uh, I've, I've heard some experience of people that have ones that are specifically designed to go on the beach in the sand, et cetera. So, um, setting those, uh, an area up for those seemed, uh, a bit much. In addition, we talked about clarifying rules for golf carts as a mobility assistance device. Um, setting up some, uh, locations where those can be used as a mobility assistance device. Uh, a golf cart has a, a different impact than somebody that's in an electric wheelchair. It, it has cargo capacity, it has another person capacity, uh, it takes up more space. Um, so it seemed prudent to, uh, include some regulations for those as well. Um, in addition, we wanted to make sure that it was clear that, uh, certain vehicles, motor vehicles, low-speed vehicles, all-train vehicles, and utility task vehicles, or UTVs, I didn't know that's what UTV stand for, I learned something here, uh, are prohibited from operating on the beach as a mobility assistance device. This kind of gets into the, when we talked about gas-operated vehicles, you know, different impacts on the beach. We wanted to make sure that it was clear that if someone came in and said, "Well, my car is my mobility assistance device", that doesn't necessarily mean you can take it on the beach and, and drive around. the beach and drive around. As far as the areas for golf carts to be used as mobility assistance devices, we took a look at basically two, two on the east, two on the west. Going on the west end from the last beach access to a point designated by signage, so I'll have staff go out there and take a look and put up a sign so people don't know that they, so people know how far they can go. From 10th place west to 13th place west, from southeast 55th to southeast 49th, and then from Aglamarie to the Oak Island Pier complex, even golf carts will be limited to electronic only, no gas vehicles out there, and operation will be limited on a dusk, so it'll go, I'm going to take your golf cart out at midnight, I guess, onto the beach. There might be some homes out there, we learned tonight, so seems like a good idea. But these are all essentially the changes we talked about last month. Staff does recommend approval, but we'd be happy to try to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions, staff? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed amendment to Chapter 28 as drafted.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. New business, consideration of amendment to the 2023 Town Council meeting schedule.
Make a motion to approve the amendment?
Oh, it's a second?
Second.
All in favor? For the sake of those in the room, basically, we've moved the October meeting.
September.
September. Yes.
September?
Lisa can go on vacation.
We've moved the next three or four meetings to January.
There you go. Got it.
All right. You can tell it's late. Consideration of contract with Oak Island Water Rescue. Is this you, David?
Yes, ma'am. So the contract is in the packet.
But there were changes.
As Lisa said, on the bottom of page nine, we put in instant commander or an officer with Oak Island Water Rescue. So we added that word in there. Everything else was basically the same. We did do some modifications to number 10 and number 12 to make sure all of our agreements on. The town's developing a social media policy. I think we pretty much have got that ironed out, but that'll be something not in the contract or in the TAC, is something totally different. And then we would be utilizing a tactical operating guideline as approved by the town manager, Fire Chief, Police Chief, and Oak Island Water Rescue Chief. We had a meeting with them. We've had several meetings with Pete and some of his staff, and I think everything in front of you was worked out, agreed upon, and so we can move on and provide services for the town.
Any questions about the contract?
But all three chiefs are here, if y'all have any questions.
So we have a cooperative slash collaborative agreement among all the services, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's good news.
That's great.
Do I have a motion to accept the contract?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Do they need a separate one, Lisa, for the TAC?
No, I think I put it in the same motion.
Okay. Yep, sorry.
Attached to the contract. So we don't need a second one for the lease?
You do.
Specifically? No. Okay, then, yes, another motion will be... Do you want to talk about the lease? Summarize the lease.
We need to clarify, the motion was to approve the contract, but it was a contract plus the TAC. So we need to have a second motion to approve the TAC.
Okay.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Are we covered now?
Yes, ma'am.
The lease for the rescue station property.
Yes, ma'am. It's also included in your packet. There was some discussions about this as well. One of the changes, if I get this right, we're charging $10 for annual renewal. And I believe they asked to have a 10-year lease for the $10. So I'm just bringing that forward for your consideration from the Oak Island Water Rescue. Pete?
But what's in the lease right now, if I'm reading this correctly, is still the one-year term?
Currently is a one-year term for $10. Mr. Hatton is the one who gave us the $10 last year. I don't remember exactly why he said that, but he, there was some reason why he gave us the $10. But during our conversations with Water Rescue, they asked for the contract to be extended to a 10-year. That was just one of their...
Requests.
Yes, ma'am.
Discussion?
I have no objection, but I will insist that we're not going to provide any funds until there's an audit. So do we have an audit?
At this time, I do not believe we have an audit for last year. No, sir. And I don't know when their schedules are in the, you're on the same calendar we are, Pete? Are you, so they end June 30th? So after that, they would be doing them. That is totally up to council. I know that's what y'all had said before.
And nothing Mr. Hatton said had changed that?
A minute.
In terms of the lease, I'm in favor of just keeping it as a one-year lease.
I am too.
Yeah, it seems 10 years is a long time.
Yep.
And there'll be a lot of changes in these positions before that, in these chairs right here. In 10 years, that could boom, boom, boom.
Gives council the options to adjust with it as the time goes on, so I think one year's enough.
Is there a motion?
I'll defer to my colleagues on that. That's not my issue. My issue is the audit.
I'll make a motion to approve the lease for the term of one year as it's drafted in our packet.
A second?
All in favor?
Wait, before we take the vote, I just have one more question. We've always done it year by year, correct?
It may have been a longer term before. I do not remember.
But last year, we changed it to year to year.
Okay.
So this would be the second year for just a one-year lease.
Year to year, okay. All right, I'm good.
So we have a first and a second? All in favor? It's in agreement with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for soil sample collection.
Yes, ma'am. Muff and Nickel are planning soil sampling in spol areas that the Corps requires us to have a consent agreement for. It's included in your packet, and we ask for approval so we can move this along.
Yeah. This been reviewed by council? The consent agreement with the Corps?
Yes.
Is that a yes? I'm sorry. Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agreement with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers as presented.
All in favor? And we will now convene, go to closed session.
Who calls? Is he?
Hold on, sorry.
Do I need a motion to go to closed session?
Do we?
Ma'am, you are the queen of this.
As long as it doesn't say...
It is not.
Make it, woman. I'll make a motion to go into closed session to consult with the town attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to NCGS 143, 318, 11, 1, and 3. I really wanted to go one more down and adjourn, but...
You'll have your chance.
Two minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
He's thinking about another number.
Do we have a choice?
No.
Really?
Yes, you could oppose.
You don't really have a choice.
No, you don't have a choice.
Mr. Eads?
Yes, Madam Mayor. In addition to the reasons stated, when we went into closed session, we need to add same statute subsection 8.5 regarding real property as one of the grounds that we went into closed session. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We, there was no action taken in closed session?
Motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.
Second.
All in favor?
Whatever she says.
Unanimous.
I was trying to help you.